To order this regular meeting in the Carabelle City Mission, it's Thursday, May 2nd, 2019, at 6:00 PM, we're at Carabelle City Hall. I would like to ask Mr. Commissioner Allen to please say the prayer and the closing allegiance to the flag and his standing votes. Thank you.
Our God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we can come together in this assembly to discuss those wonderful things for this wonderful city you've given us. We ask you to lead us and guide us in that which is right, that we might shun that which is wrong, and do that which we best for all the citizens of this community, and even in this county. Our grateful Father for the beautiful weather we're getting, too. That's nice, just sort of appreciate if you can sort of keep that a little bit more. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, my plan. Anybody get confused? I wonder if they were all confused.
Okay. All righty then. Now, let me remind you, all the commissioners and everyone, please speak into the microphones when you come to speak or speaking from the dials. We need to amend the agenda tonight to include Resolution 072019 as the very last item. And may I have a motion for that, please?
I have a motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second to amend the agenda? Okay, that motion is by Commissioner Mathis, second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda that includes April 4th, 2019, regular meeting minutes and the attorney's invoices for the month of February. Did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes and the invoices? May we have a motion for that?
I move to approve.
Okay, we have Commissioner Melander to motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we're going to move right on into public comment. Okay, so public comment, I believe there's, I know at least two people here to speak under public comment. Okay, we have Mr. Rob Powis speaking to the microphone, sir, and tell us your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Powis, and I'm here representing myself. What I wanted to do was give you a very brief report on some work that I've done in collaboration with Mayor La Paz concerning the issue of derelict vessels on the Carabelle River. As most of you probably know, last June in 2018, Apalachicola passed an ordinance putting restrictions and limitations on floating structures such as non-self-propelled houseboats and barges in the Apalachicola River. And what that did to me was prompt the idea to draft a similar ordinance that I planned to present to all of you for adoption into the city code. The ordinance that I did draft was to do several things. One is promote water quality, enhance navigational safety, protect maritime infrastructure, protect the marine environment, and most importantly, to deter improperly stored abandoned and derelict vessels. Two principal points in the draft are that vessels anchored on the Carabelle River must first meet the Florida marine sanitation requirements, and that the vessel must be seaworthy and be able to self-propel itself. My intent was to have that ordinance be something that could be enforced by the Carabelle City Police, but also FWC, and possibly the Franklin County Sheriff. I have a copy of that, I'm going to get to Courtney in case anybody's interested in reading that. When I finished the draft, I decided that, before presenting it to the city commissioners here, that I would enlist the support from both DEP and FWC. And so I first reviewed the draft with Mr. Wade Dandridge, who is DEP's Division of Waterway Resource Management. And Mr. Dandridge had absolutely no issues or concerns with the draft and was very supportive of our efforts to do this. I then met with Captain Gary Klein, who is head of FWC's Boating and Waterway Management. Captain Klein reviewed the draft with his attorney, and he also was very supportive of the ordinance, but they informed me that the city of Carabelle's jurisdiction does not extend beyond the river's edge. And therefore, if an ordinance was passed, it would be unenforceable, and if somebody was to try and enforce it, it could be challenged in court. And the second piece that he told me is that FWC is also wrestling with trying to come up with a legal definition of what determines the seaworthiness of a vessel, which seems kind of simple to me, but I guess it's not. Therefore, I decided I could not go forward with presenting an ordinance to the city. I asked Captain Klein what we should do in the event that we have concerns or complaints, or anybody had any concerns or complaints concerning at-risk or abandoned vessels in the river. And he told me that they should be addressed with the local FWC law enforcement agency, and the head of that being Captain Charlie Wood. It's my belief that the only way that we can deter potential derelict vessels on the Carabelle River is for the city to work closely with our local FWC. I think we've been very lucky that we found a buyer for the Tom Crum Fish House, and that buyer is cleaning up several of the sunken shrimp boats and taking away the eyesores there. However, there are others at-risk vessels on the river, and we do need to ensure that FWC inspects these boats for compliance with FWC rules and regulations. Otherwise, I think we're just going to continue to have additional sunken vessels in the river. What I'd like to do is ask for all the support of all the commissioners at some point in time to meet in the near future with Captain Wood, to gain his support and work towards a solution to this problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Powis. And I did work with Mr. Powis very closely through all of this, did a lot of research work, brought in a lot of ordinances from other cities and counties throughout the state, was the liaison between Mr. Powis and Captain Wood, had several conversations with Captain Wood, and who led us first to the DEP, said that we had to get approval of the ordinance through the DEP and then through Captain Klein. And so, you know, it ends up that there is no, the city has absolutely no jurisdiction in the waters up to the mean high water level, as Mr. Powis has reported. So I called to Captain Wood again to ask, how can we, how do we manage this? And he, he once again reported to me that the Carabelle River belongs to the state up to the mean high water line, and that the FWC has complete jurisdiction in the Carabelle River and all state waters. The only location in the Carabelle River where the FWC would not have jurisdiction would be within a city on the mooring field. And it would be extremely costly for the city to develop its own mooring field, but then we still, the city still would not have jurisdiction outside of that mooring field, and no jurisdiction within the rest of the river. So Captain Wood said that he and the entire staff of the FWC want to help out with mitigating and handling complaints about activities in the river. And this is for the commissioners, because I'm sure a lot of you get complaints. I have heard that some come to your Cal Alice Photography and complain even, and there's nothing that the city can do. And the best thing to do is to send these people to the FWC staff. And he, the number is 850-697-3764. That's the number that Captain Wood gave, and he will explain and take the complaints for us and handle that for us. So... Could you repeat that number? That's 850-697-3764. And Captain Wood also gave his own cell number, I'm sure it's his work number, 850-879-7020. So we put together a pretty good ordinance, and our next step was to make sure the FWC can enforce it, then speak with the chief, make sure he can enforce it. And yes, we were intending to go to the Sheriff Department as well. But that's that, and I thank Rob for all of his good work to, you know, we really do care about the river, and we want it to be cleaned up and kept safe and clean for all of us. Okay, so we'll move on. Is there other public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mark Melcher here with Jim Newton. And what I'd like to do, on behalf of the Board of Directors of Camp Gordon Johnson, would like to say thank you to the mayor, commissioners, and also the city of Carabelle for all their support they gave us, and Camp Gordon Johnson days. Without their help, we could never hold the three-day event on Allegiant Hollow of Low Country Foil, the wonderful parade, and the first annual dice run, which was a great success. So I'd like to say thank you for all that. Jim, enjoy.
I didn't hear what you said, it's five minutes.
Any comments?
I wanted to give you a brief rundown on Camp Gordon Johnson days past year. The handout that I just gave, passed around, is the article that was in the Apalachicola Times on 3/28. I don't know if everybody read that or not. But I guess they served around 100 meals on the Low Country Foil on Friday night. We had approximately 60 entrants in the parade on Saturday. The dinner at the senior system that are on the Saturday night was to settle out. The dice run, which was the first year for this, we walked through this with a guy by the names of, which topic? He lives in property sale. And we've never had a dice run before. I don't know if you people know what a dice run is or not.
Can you get closer to the mic so we can...
Yeah, probably could. Anyway, we were hoping on the dice run that we would get 25 or 30 to break even, and we got 70 entrants. So it was a very good success, and we plan to do it again next year. That's not, yes, is what I wanted to say, except to thank you for, the city of Carabelle for their donation, or whatever you call it.
Support.
Support for the anti, and so on and so forth. It was very welcome, so.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions?
Hope and thank you for all you guys at Camp Gordon Johnson. I think it's an excellent worthy call.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All volunteer work. I think you have one paid employee?
Two.
Two paid employees.
Two paid employees, yes.
But we do appreciate your presence in the city. We enjoy the parade every year, and your dedication to Camp Gordon Johnson and all the veterans.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, is there further, okay, Mr. Christie?
Hi, Louis Christie. I'm representing the Chamber today, Chamber of Commerce of Carabelle. I just handed out a package for to roll around. This is in reference to, four weeks ago, we took this day, this meeting, we found out we were not going to have a riverfront festival this year. And this happens to be today's newspaper, three weeks later after the one that announced we would not have a festival. It says...
Carabelle pulls off.
Carabelle pulls off annual festival.
Very good of you.
So I just wanted to let you know that we had a lot of volunteers that stepped forward. We had a community meeting. There were 23 individuals that showed up in a small room in the Carabelle Chamber of Commerce offer, office. Everybody bought in, raised their hand, agreed that we needed to have a festival, and they would participate in whatever means necessary to make it happen. And we took them at their word and went forward and proceeded to get a ton of volunteers to step up. One of the first, on the front page of what I handed out is a list of all the donations, the sponsors that we received. We got Duke Energy, Inovia, C2RW Properties, Sunset Isle, James Moore and Company, Carabelle Cares, Sun Coast Electric Networking, 10th War BBQ, Greg Christophson and Brenda La Paz, Florida Guest Services, Rotten Lady Pug held a throwing at her booth and turned over the proceeds. Franklin Carrion County Tourist Development Council, of course, with its matching TDC money and for marketing, and Carabelle Chamber of Commerce. And we still may be receiving some money from Centennial Bank, we got our figures squashed on that. We had a lot of in-kind donations. We had Harries Barn Grill and Marine Street Grill stepped forward with the entertainment, which was provided on the street on the main stage. We also had the Fish and Fashion Show, and we had Marine Street, I mean TNT Supercenter give us a golf court, golf cart for use. We had the city of Carabelle, I wanted to personally thank Miranda for marketing to help us keep track of the claims that we're going to be making back against the TDC $2,000 grant. I'd like to thank Courtney for her coordination of all the services that we receive from the city. William for stepping up and taking care of stage and tents and signage and all the barricades that we needed. Of course, the Carabelle Police Department for security and crosswalks and traffic control. Franklin County Sheriff's Office came up with the bounce house that they loaned us so that we could have the kids use that. The Franklin County Solid Waste Department delivering us the dumpster and hauling off the trash for the day. We will be having a post-mortem meeting soon and review what we, what we learned from having to put this together in two weeks' time, what we felt like we could have done better, what the future may be. One of the things I'd like for the commission to consider is who is the owner of the Carabelle Riverfront Festival that's held annually? Who is going to take ownership over this festival? Who's going to be the fiscal agent from this point forward, too? That is, who's going to hold the money at the end of each festival? There is money that is made. And where does that money go? How is it transitioned? Will this be done by a committee in the future? And also to think about, should we register this as a nonprofit group for the festival I handed you out some handouts here. Got any questions? I'll be glad to try to entertain and answer for them.
Well, I certainly appreciate you coming and making your presentation here and letting us know, all the folks that have helped. We, I know I appreciate you picking up the pieces. The business community, the chamber, the local volunteers came together and pulled it off, and we had a nice little, you know, a nice festival. It was, you had 60 vendors up somewhere around in there, so it was just, it was just very nice. And I enjoyed it. And music, you know, where we could hear the music throughout the festival area. And I will say, I worked the TDC booth several hours, and each person that came by, you know, we'd call them over, and we'd want to know if they're from Franklin County. And we gave away all the koozies and almost all of our brochures, so that, you know, there were a lot of people from out of town at the festival, and that's a good sign. So you brought up three very good questions. Who is the owner? Who is the fiscal agent going forward? These are, these are some very important questions and need to be answered. And register as an NPO, and I can go ahead and speak to that one. The other two, I'm going to have to think about and talk with Ms. Courtney and the attorney, and you all, and see what you all think about that. But we do need a fiscal agent. There is money that's made, and I guess Ms. Lisa's going to be reporting on the budget, which I'm very proud to see, you know, this quick after the festival. But registering as an NPO, I would have to say yes. And I have been an advocate for that since, since the chamber did not have it. It's Carabelle Cares doing business as a Carabelle Riverfront Festival in the past, and that's a fictitious name. That needs to be registered as a name, and it needs to be, it needs to be registered as an NPO, so that whoever's organizing that festival can go straight to the TDC and get their funding from the TDC and not have to run it through the city and city staff unless the city's going to run it. But we have skeleton crew here, and I just don't know if our staff can organize a festival. Y'all do, y'all do great work, but get at it. That's all I have to say right now.
Mayor, I would like to tell you a little bit. I'd also like to say thank you for you guys, for Louis, and everyone involved that pulled it off, did a great festival. I participated, was there most all day, enjoyed it, and absolutely right. We need to start now for next year.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's a lot of conversation to be had. I don't think we're ready to make definite decisions, but I'm not. But there's a lot of conversation to be had, a lot of things to do, and we need to start it all.
Thank you. Before I leave and let Lisa speak toward the budget, I have one other thing I wanted to add in. I noticed that we had a lot of people that were coming over this past weekend to launch their boats down the street. And I mean, you could count the hundreds of boats, I think, over the last, the real three-day period that came and left. And the period of time I spent standing there watching the boats, I did not see anybody put any money, collect any money, deposit for launching their boats and that. I think we lost thousands of dollars over the three-day period, to be an estimate.
Do you think they had permanent stickers?
I looked at every car I saw that did not pay or put, number one, there weren't any envelopes available to put any money in.
Ah.
Then nobody volunteered to go over there, just throw $10 in the bucket. And none of the cars I saw launched, which I stayed to watch about 15, had any sticker, which is supposed to be displayed on the driver's side windshield. So those people just took advantage of us not having anybody there. I understand we don't have a harbor master now?
That, a dock master, yes, we do not.
So I think we should do that.
Thank you for the input. We appreciate that information. Thank you. I'll just make this really quick. I'm Lisa Mindes, and the executive director of the Carabelle Chamber of Commerce. And of the, one of the handouts that we gave you is a preliminary accounting of everything from the festival, from the funding to the expenditures. Obviously, not everything's in or settled yet. A majority of this week has been post-publicity as far as getting the newspaper, the thank you's, and so on. What I tried to do down towards the bottom in the in-kind match was put together the value of services that were donated to us, so that in the future, if we needed to actually pay those out, those costs out ourselves, we could account for in the budget. So as things get a little bit more accountable, again, we're talking about that secondary meeting or organizational meeting for the future. I worked closely with Lisa Keith Lucas that did the vendors, and we sent out to all vendors yesterday, I'd Survey Monkey, a survey to, survey the vendors also, too, on their opinions on different parts. And I have a copy of that survey, but I did not include that package. But once we get those results and we get more of a final accounting, then we'll organize a meeting for all the interested parties and see where we go from there. And again, I thank everybody in this whole community for all of that, because everybody did step forward and really put a wonderful, wonderful, lifetime Carabelle and the Carabelle community, and I'm greatly appreciative of it. And thank you, Ms. Lisa, and thank you for all your overtime and dedication to the city and to the chamber.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, anything else for Ms. Lisa? Okay, all right. You all have a good evening. I appreciate you being here. Okay, we have another public comment. Mr. Steve Allen?
My name is Steve Allen. I am the person who's been supporting, coordinating the festival for the last 10 years. And I thought the chamber and the community did a fabulous job. What is the mic? The model that I had in place did not work because of shortage of vendors, and the city and the community stepped up, recognizing the value of the festival, took it off my plate. I supported it, and as you know, and I want, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, I'm just really glad it's thermal to shine. But since we did bring up the nonprofit stuff and what's going to happen moving forward, first of all, Carabelle Cares is a nonprofit, and the bank account, doing business as Carabelle Riverfront Festival, is a separate account that has all the money and expenses that I've ever used for the festival in. And as soon as there is an organization that represents the festival moving forward, I will make a donation to that cause of every penny in that, including all of the built-up Facebook account that we built over the last 10 years, and any asset for things that have to do with the festival is there, and will be there hopefully as part of that moving forward. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. Thank you.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate that. And Steve, I appreciate all your long years of working with the festival.
Thank you.
I know I've done two out at the airport now, and it's grueling, and it's months and months and months of work.
Yes, sir.
And dedication, so I thank you, sir, very much. All right then, is there any other public comment? Any more? Oh, jeez, we've got hands raising everywhere. Public comment night.
I'm excited.
Do you want to speak, Mr. May?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, come forward, please, sir.
Hello. My name's Bo May. I got no voice. Just take one minute. There's two billboards, one there, one here. This one over here seems to be falling apart, and the picture is not up, and it blocks the view of the building when you drive into town for about, until you get right up on the building. So this real estate, Butler, should either make the picture better, or the city should let me take over the billboard. This billboard back here is, I believe, on city property, and should say, hey, howdy, what's going on here? It should be a bit colorful thing.
Well, we know that, you know, you're on the CRA. We did, we did fund that faded, faded thing years ago.
Yep.
And we can't fund it. We learned we can't do that, so what we need to do is find some advertising money for the city.
It's not a CRA, it's not really a CRA project.
The CRA can't fund it. So, because it's out of district.
Yeah, it would look good.
Yeah, but I know Courtney and I have talked about it, and I have an idea of where maybe to get some money, but I don't want to announce that in public just yet.
Okay, sit under the tables.
Yes.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you. And Steve, the Butler sign, I don't know how to, does anyone know how you deal with the Butler sign?
They own the sign.
Yeah.
They own the sign.
Yes, they own the sign. Oh, there he is, right there, Mr. Butler. Hiding in plain sight. We're trying to make Carabelle beautiful. Okay, is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? All right then, we can move on to the commissioner reports. We have Commissioner Allen. Okay, Commissioner Mathis?
Yes.
Okay.
Justin Button has went through all of the criteria that we put forward. I think now he should come up with some money.
He should come up, or make the city?
Well, we should come up with some money to borrow him.
Okay, I do know he's, he's got a CDL, and he got his advanced maintenance of traffic, and he's been, has he been working with managing inventory on...
Achieving of fuel logs and the meat maintenance and the inventory of...
Well, if we need to put that as an agenda item, how would we handle that?
It does need to be put as an agenda item for a pay raise. Also, are you just looking for a pay raise, or is it, has, if you're...
I think he should be put up.
Because that has to be advertised. It has to be advertised in-house to be referred.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second.
So to advertise for...
In-house.
In-house first, for one week, Streets and Roads Superintendent.
Yes.
And then we need to figure out the money amount. Okay, all right, but we'll advertise for Streets and Roads Superintendent. So we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis, and a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make some comments. I think the commissioner is right on target with the raise increase for Justin to set that point. I'm a little concerned about promoting, promoting and creating a position that we may put an employee into that's not ready for it, and put him in a situation, or put the person in a situation where he may not can handle a superintendent's job, is what the question is. And then that would put him somewhat in jeopardy. I have concern about the employee, not about the position, just about the employee. a superintendent's job, is what the question is. And then, that would put him somewhat in jeopardy. I have concern about the employee, not about the position, just about the employee. Now, the pay increase, again, I support. I think that's a good thing. I think we need to move forward with that. But I'm a little hesitant, and I think we need to think about it a little bit more before we do the superintendent part of it. That's just my thought. Now, it'd be difficult for me to vote on the motion because of what I just stated, because there's two parts to it. There's part of that motion that, that I support. But I'm really concerned about, I think my analogy was that I've used before is, I wouldn't want to take somebody out of a frying pan and put them in the fire, and then they fail, set them up for failure. That's just my feeling.
Well, I think a man's been on the job for three years, he don't know more than somebody you pull off the street that had a day you've been on it.
I wasn't suggesting pulling it out of the street. I was just concerned about the employees. So, that's my comment.
Courtney, is there any type of, a small type of a management course or supervisory course? Does the Florida League of Cities offer any?
I'm not sure about the Florida League of Cities, but I know there are other programs, because I've looked into it, and there are some other classes that are often around locally. Maybe some one, two-day classes.
And he's keeping the inventories using the bridge that the chief has developed?
Well, I think he's more interested in money. He could spend that if I were to lay worth a damn.
And I, I know that, I have talked with Courtney before about how we, how we could go about and get a raise for him, because he has, he has put some, poured some effort with getting these certifications. And, and, yes, I do agree on the, on the raise. And, and, so, you know, I'm torn, because we don't want to put him in a position where someone like me, I'm going to expect a lot, but Dustin does do a good job. But then again, you take someone off the street, they, they don't know the job just yet. Unless you hire someone who's been working in that job in another city, and they're, they're going to want some, some real money at that point. So, anyway, we have the motion by Commissioner Mathis and the second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed?
Opposed for the reasons that I explained.
Okay. So, all in favor, and Commissioner Melander opposes? Okay. So, the motion does carry. All right. Is there anything else, Commissioner Mathis?
No, I'm through.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Melander?
I have no.
Well, that's okay. I passed you. Do you have anything?
No, I passed.
All right. Commissioner Walden and Commissioner Melander. Okay. All right. So. Yeah. Okay. I just want to say, my report's half, half what it was last month, but I'll be quick. Over the past month, I participated in my usual board meetings, TDC, ARPC, Appalachian Regional Planning Council, Community Traffic Safety Team, and then we had our CRA meetings this month and other meetings as needed. On April 23rd, I met with Joshua Gable. He's the Regional Director for Senator Rubio. We met here at City Hall. He was here to learn what the city needed in terms of Hurricane Michael recovery. We reviewed damages, sustained city property, homes and businesses, and progress of FEMA reimbursements to the city. We talked about what's needed for economic development in the area, the need for pharmacy in Carabelle, tourism, aquaculture, and the need for construction of an interstate interchange at State Road 65 and Interstate 10. We visited the airport, where Mr. Tim Sullivan gave Mr. Gable a tour of the facilities. And, once again, we reviewed with him the need for the Carabelle, the airport to be included in the FAA's National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. And when we finished with the master plan, I think we'll be soon ready to apply for that, and we'll be requesting Senator Rubio's support for that endeavor. Representatives from Camp Hope, Project Camp Hope, with Pastor Themo of the First United Church of Appalachia College, turned the old City Hall building three times now, about an hour and a half, two hours each time. They're in search of a centralized site between Pensacola and Tampa to establish a long-term recovery center. And they are considering the old City Hall building as an option. Tim Linghorn Engineering has submitted the Triumph Free Application Form with five letters of support that I was able to secure throughout the county. The free app is for construction of four new aircraft hangars, a new general aviation terminal, flexible workspace, and additional parking in the amount of $2 million. And we should hear back shortly. They generally return their answers quickly. They'll probably call you or Mr. Zach, the Economic Advisor for that, that board. The Water and Sewer Department is in process of installing new radio reed water meters in the Landarch area. Forty have been installed already. The Water and Sewer Department crews are servicing the water and sewer infrastructure in Jordan Bayou subdivision in preparation for the planned new housing development there. The lift station pumps and panel box will be serviced. A driveway is needed for access to the lift station, so that will have to be constructed. Now, the Water and Sewer Department is holding an open house for public awareness on June 1st from 9:00 a.m. to noon. They will be serving refreshments, probably just water and cookies, but they will have refreshments. And the public is invited to visit and tour the Carabelle Water Treatment Plant, the Advanced Waste Water Treatment Plant on Kent Hope Road, and the Sands Park Vacuum Station at the southwest corner of Sands Park. Two water and sewer trucks, one police vehicle, and three 14-gallon plastic storage tanks will be advertised as surplus property. The power bill last month for this building was $353.70. That's about $30 less than last month. And the power bill for the old City Hall building was $166. So, I want to say thank you to the Carabelle Police Department for patrolling the boat ramp lots and issuing warning tickets. Now, Mr. Christie had mentioned that, you know, that a lot of them did not have stickers, but I was in here on Monday, and I saw a stack of warning tickets that had been issued over the weekend. So, you know, I don't know. We'll have to take a look and see what's, what's going on over there. But I do know that the police department did issue some warning tickets for those without permits, rent permits. And thank you, Ms. Courtney, for having the no littering signs posted. I've received a lot of compliments, and they're, they're nice-looking, too. They look good on the boardwalk over there at the Marine Street Boardwalk. And also for assisting with the fundraising for the Riverfront Festival. They had a good positive response on short notice. And, so, now I want to talk to you all about a letter of support for the ARPC, Appalachian Regional Planning Council. I've requested, I hope that the attorney got to look at this. I've requested all of y'all, the Commissioners, to take a look at it. And I'll be sending a request out to the Chamber and the Carabelle Waterfront Partnership as well. At the last ARPC meeting, we had big discussion about congestion that happens up on State Road 65 and State Road 20 when there's big evacuation. The closest, State Road 65 is the most, closest and most direct evacuation route going north from the coast for all the residents and visitors of St. George, East Point, Appalachia, and Carabelle and Landarch of Franklin County, and Sumatra, Wilma, Teloja, and Oxford in Liberty County. And being on the eastern end of the county here, Carabelle and Landarch uses 67 sometimes to evacuate, but we still have to get on 65. When we get up there, we can't get on 10. We've got to go east or west, try and get out of, out of the way of the storm. And it was a standstill, I understand, from the Commissioners and mayors up that way in Gaston County, trying to, to get east or west on 20. Sixty, being that, you know, 65 is a designated evacuation route, and there's no connection to 10, to allow a safe and efficient travel out of, out of the way of the storm. So, I'm here to ask you all to accept this letter. If you have any, any changes you might want to change, but it's a letter of, in support, drafted by me, in support of the Appalachian Regional Planning Council's letter to request a feasibility study and potential construction of an interchange at Interstate 10 and State Road 65. And in addition to a safe and effective evacuation route, it would also provide a direct route into the heart of Franklin County, making State Road 65 a direct transportation corridor with significant impact, economic impact on all of Franklin County, tourism and, and tourist development and economic development. So, I, I hope you all have had an opportunity to read this. They're having?
I haven't. I just received it.
Okay. And I asked for it to be sent out last week, this email.
It may have, but my email's down. But I just received it.
But they are having the FDOT folks come on May 16th to the ARPC meeting, and it would be nice to have some support from the entire county. And in fact, I'll be going to the County Commission as well as the Commissioner of both there, requesting a letter of support. But I'll be glad to read it, then, if you haven't read it. I'm sorry that I have to, to take time to do this, but.
You don't have to.
All right. So, do, can we have a motion for this?
I have. I'm looking at the, we have this letter of support for the ARPC.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any discussion, any further discussion, comments?
That would be very helpful, because many times we go up the quays here somewhere. Usually, I go across the river, 365, and then go on the quay and go over here, 267. And it'd be nice to just stay on 67 and 65 and go on again.
I know, and it would be wonderful.
Much better.
Well, is, I'm sure from what the mayor just explained, though, that Gaston County is involved in the discussion with ARPC?
Yes. Gaston County was, was right there. And the gentleman that made the motion, Commissioner Dexter Barber from Liberty County, said, yes, Gaston County was everyone, was, it was a unanimous vote to send this letter to the FDOT Secretary Gaynor to request a feasibility study and potential construction of an interchange at Interstate 10 and State Road 65. They, they all want it.
I think that's the reason why I asked. I think it would be great, because there is an exchange four miles from the location you're talking about.
Okay. So, is there any further discussion? All right. Then, we have the motion by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Mathis. All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? Okay. And then that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. All right. Mr. Hartman, staff reports.
All right. Just by the way, a quick update. We still have not received a notice of a state being opened for Dr. Grantham. And I would give it another 30 days or so, and then I can discuss the permission, our options, all that. Be complicated in some, some cases of it, but we have options. And then, second, the Custom Homes has paid the deposit under the lease, as well as provided proof of insurance as requested. They have not taken possession of the premises yet, but they're moving ahead.
Do we have questions for Mr. Hartman? Questions or comments?
How long would it be before we could take possession?
Sorry, I was talking about them. So, they haven't taken possession of, they haven't occupied the premises yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Next, we move on to the City Administrator.
I have several things for you all tonight. Progress of the construction of the hangar at the airport. As far as I know, everything's been completed, except for the power. The power still has not been installed out there. Supers should have been done, supers have been done weeks ago. I've been in contact with the contractor this week. He was going to have someone out there this week. He even said we could have a walkthrough into the week, first of next week, but as of today, it still has not been done. John Curtis from Summer Camp, we had asked for a feasibility study. I did hear back from him this week, and he said that they, they've had some other things going on, that they are still interested, that they're still working on that. If you'll see, on the desk, I put out a hard copy of all the evaluation forms that we approved last month. And evaluations will be started this month, and we're going to do them the week of May 13th. That will kind of be in the middle of the month, so they'll be done during that week. During our staff meeting for our Water and Sewer Department, in discussion with Mr. Painter, we're going to get a fair market analysis on all the surplus property out at Landarch that is surplus that we're not using. And that'll just give us an idea of what the property's worth, and then we can come back with other options or, that we'll at least have that data, and we'll know how much the property's worth out there. Commissioner Melander and I have been working on the reorganization of the EDC board. We've had, we had an initial meeting with a, with a couple of existing members and a couple of other people that are interested in joining. In the setup, the bylaws, the way it's set up now, is that you have certain members. You have one from the Waterfront Partnership, and you have a member from the Council and the City Administrator and the Chamber of Commerce. And we're asking to add two more members to that board. That we want a business member and then a member at large. And then that would allow for us to put some new, some new people in there. And we have some people that are interested in taking new places. So, that does need a motion from you guys, if you want to go ahead and.
How many members do you have now? I mean, how many? I've never seen the bylaws, so what does, what's that called for?
See if I can remember this. It's a City Administrator, City Commissioner, a member from the Waterfront Partnership, a member from the Chamber.
Saint Joe.
A real estate agent.
A real estate person, yeah.
Saint Joe.
Saint Joe.
And there may have been one more. See, what, there was seven of them. Look at David.
Yeah. It would have been an odd number. Do you remember Mr. De, Mr. Butler?
Not of him. It wouldn't need to be an odd number, because it's just a recommendation committee.
Originally, we had discussed taking Saint Joe out, but I contacted Mr. Curtis, and he's interested in sitting on the board, so he says, well, we'll leave Saint Joe in there and just add two more members, if it's given to the Committee.
How do you choose a chairperson for that, that committee?
They have to, I don't know. Do you have any rights on who's the chair?
I don't know, St. Mayor?
Yes.
We've been working and trying to, use the proper word, reignite the EDC. And, again, through the promotion and through the conversations and the actions taken. As Courtney said, we have two new members, two new people at this time that are very interested, not that either. One of them's a business representative, and I'll go ahead and announce their names in just a minute. So, hopefully, we'll get a motion. We had a, somewhat of a meeting two weeks ago, Courtney. And most of the existing members that are still interested, not had contact at all, virtually all of them. Most of those were able to attend. One was not, and two were not. And, but anyway, it looks like we're going to be able to reignite it, especially if we can get the board approval for the two new members.
Make motion for two new members?
I'll second the motion, but I'd like to announce who they are. Aiden Barber with the, over at the Boat Club, and Angela Webster, resident here in Carabelle. And I'll second the motion. Commissioner Mathis, may I?
Okay. So, we have that motion for two additional members to the EDC. By Commissioner Mathis, the second by Commissioner Melander. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? And can that motion carries?
Angela is also in the Capo area. I would remind you, see, we need to put an affiliated organization within, because the members come and go. So, that would be our at-large member.
But, and, and I'm assuming Commissioner Melander would be sitting on the EDC? But, and I'm assuming Commissioner Melander would be sitting on the EDC as well?
He was appointed to him before, so.
Pretty active, trying to reignite it.
Okay, okay, I guess the quotes to repair the Marine Street Bike Rant. Uh-huh, the motion carried. We had Mathis, Melander, and no discussion, all were in favor, and the motion carried.
This is a repair for the Bike Rant that we discussed, advice was made, and it's to repair the wood quarters of the piers first, and install boat bumper to the top row of piers, public boat ramp on Marine Street. It's about 400 foot. This is for the stainless screws, and we secure all loose pieces of existing bumper with stainless screws, and install factory quarters on the outside quarters. And it was for $2,500.
Alright, so you'd like a motion to approve that, those repairs?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. And we have that motion back to go ahead and approve that quote for those repairs to the Boat Rant by Commissioner Melander, a second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Earlier this month, or last month, during our CRA meeting, we discussed reallocating some money, and we were, the CRA board's recommendation to the city commission was to increase the payment from the city to the CRA fund from $100,000 to $125,000, and that does need to be approved by the city commission.
I move to approve. I'll second.
Alright, so that motion is by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Mathis, to approve that reallocation from the general fund to the CRA fund. All in favor? Any opposed? And that, I did not ask for discussion, is there any discussion? Okay then, I guess the motion carries.
In your packets on the desk, I've, I've put a picture of a memorial plaque. As part of the purchase of this property, and to put this building, it was in the contract, the sales contract for the land, that we would put a recognition plaque up for Ms. Bragdon, saying that she's given a donation for the property. So this was what is suggested by the city staff, is something similar to what I've put on the desk here. I don't really know what size, but it's something like this.
Maybe a 12 plus 16.
Yeah, 12 plus 16. And, you know, Ms. Bragdon has stated that the bigger the better, and then she, she likes to build more outside, if y'all wanna give her that, but the bigger the better. And it's a word that we've come up with, which is say Patricia A. Bragdon, in recognition of her generous donation and unwavering support to the city of Caravelle, with great respect and much gratitude.
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have Commissioner Melander and Commissioner Walden, motion, and second to approve the recommendation from staff for this recognition plaque for Ms. Pat Bragdon, and her, for her generous donation. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that carries.
Just for information, this has been approved a long time ago, years ago, it should have been done, but then Wilburn, Hurley, Messer Pavilion, and the fire station, we never put a plaque up there, and it should have been one put up a long time ago. And we just come up with some word that said Wilburn, Hurley, Messer Pavilion, in recognition of his steadfast support and dedication to the city of Caravelle and its citizens for his 26 years of service as mayor of Caravelle, Florida. That's really for information, because we voted on it years ago, and we've just never gotten around to it.
The family was supposed to get some.
Yeah, the family was gonna come up with some word.
And that was years ago, but we just don't wanna put it off any longer. I mean, the pavilion was dedicated to Mayor Messer a long time, I mean shortly after it was built. And so, you know, and, and we had, we wanna put a memorial plaque there for him with his name on it. And he did have, you know, 26 years of service, he loved Caravelle, and he was dedicated to Caravelle and its citizens, so we certainly want to recognize him.
If I can, Courtney, real quick, mayor, if I might, I noticed something down there Saturday that's gonna be of concern, at the Hurley, Messer Pavilion, where the FEMA folks were using that for staging area, which was fine, but that, their forklift bumped into that metal frame in several places, and had skinned paint off from it, took the paint away from it, and it started to rust pretty bad. Can we get that taken care of from FEMA?
I will see what I can do, I'll talk to FEMA. At the very minimum, have our guys to work on it.
Well, it'll lead into a large problem, it's a small issue right now, but it'll lead into a large problem.
But I will call FEMA and see if they can add that. And our time's up to add projects, and we had a dead line, we could add and not, but our colleagues say, y'all get these things, it's not hurting.
Well, and that's for the forklift, I mean, they wasn't on purpose, but it rusted and it skinned it up pretty good.
One last item is, we've got this, staff's got this, 4th of July falls on a Thursday, so we wanna let people know ahead of time if we're gonna, of course, when we change the meeting, I would assume, so, do y'all wanna come up with another date for the July meeting? Do you wanna think about it, come back next month, but, but be thinking about that, that it is, it is, 4th of July is on a Thursday, and that would be our regular monthly meeting.
Well, y'all shouldn't assume that we're not gonna have it. We're a city hall.
Mayor, I won't be here.
No, but I'm joking. And I have, I looked at my calendar already, and I knew that, and I think if we could go ahead and make a decision now, it would be better, everybody can make their plans for July, and we could go ahead and get the notice out that we're changing our regular meeting. And I looked, and, and we have had to do this before, for New Years or something.
Yes, we have.
And we usually just push it out to the next Thursday. And how's that look for you all? I believe that's July the 11th.
I move it, we move it next Thursday.
Okay, July the 11th, okay, is that alright with, with staff? Okay, so we have a commissioner, a motion by Commissioner Allen to move the 4th of July city commission meeting to July 11th, 2019, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries.
And this wasn't on my list, but since we brought up 4th of July, it reminded me, the fireworks guy could not do 4th of July, and he's suggesting to do the weekend, the Friday after fifth.
And I have that on my list too, because of when I thought about it, I actually penciled it in, and I think July the 5th would be perfect. Appalachia's having their fireworks on July the 3rd, St. George Island July the 4th, and the businesses would love it if we had it on the 5th, because they could, they could have, you know, celebrations and stuff. I know the Caravelle Boat Club has their big annual party around our 4th of July fireworks.
We'll go ahead and schedule that.
Okay, and I don't think we need a motion, are we all in agree, agreement of that? And it saves us about $10,000 too, so. Okay, that's all right. Thank you very much, Courtney.
Thanks.
Y'all have further questions? Okay, we'll move on into the city clerk.
I, I don't have anything, I think she's got it all.
Okay, alright, then, no need.
Okay, quick updates. Quick update on projects. Avenue B, that construction is nearing completion, the two big items remaining there are replacement of sod and asphalt. And when they begin that work, that, that should happen relatively quickly, I would say, within about three to four days. The other roadway project under construction at Kew's addition, that is underway and on schedule, final completion there is 28 June. On City Hall, there is one remaining punch list item, which is the asphalt survey, updated asphalt survey. Just before the meeting, I received it digitally, so we'll get the paper version signed and sealed. There is also a light fixture in Courtney's office that they have ordered, and is on the way, and I'll replace that. Those are the last remaining items, and we'll be able to close out the contract with Sperry for City Hall.
And that's for the punch list?
Yes.
And then Courtney's got some, you know, some, something with the air conditioning that they're working with on a warranty.
Yes, and he, he was here.
They said that everything is done, you can't find it, but it's still, we found it. And we think we know what it is.
Okay.
The noise?
Okay, alright, well, followed with that also was, with contractors.
Like a Luber doors or something?
And then I need to speak with you after, if you'll remind me about the, this Sperry and all.
Okay, alright, very good. We did have sound attenuation plans prepared, and we've asked for a price from Sperry to provide that. The light house stage project, we're developing the construction plans, permanent applications On the water side of that, as of this morning, the legislative budget request list has not been published, but I think that should come out tomorrow, so we'll keep an eye on that part.
Thank you for following me.
On the raw water filter hydrogen peroxide project at well four, we submitted those plans to DEP for final approval, final approval, to implement that pilot study for a 90-day period. So we expect to get that final approval here within the next week or so. And then, lastly, we have a lift station rehabilitation for the Landarc East Lift Station, and we have an elevated platform that we're finishing the design of. We'll have that ready by Monday, we've been coordinating with Charlie on that, and he'll be ready to send that out for pricing. Are we happy to answer any questions you may have?
So we have any further questions? Okay, and you faced, you answered my questions, and I had a question about the, the sound approving that we had requested, Courtney showed me the architectural designs today, so we'll see what they come up with for a price. And just concerned about Paget, we haven't seen them since last Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah, so we did contact them, scheduling issues with their sod consultant, but they, they understand, they're ready to finish this out.
I have one question, mayor. On Avenue B, we had some discussion at last meeting about the IDAs used on the sidewalks, is there anything different on that?
Um, yes, we did send a lengthy email to them, and we did receive a response by phone, and notified Courtney by email. At the moment, it appears that IGA is willing to accommodate city's requests and suggestions to, to operate the truck in a, in a different way. So they're, they're moving the loading apparatus, and asking their drivers to attempt to make that move, that maneuver. So he's, he seemed agreeable over the phone to, to what we're asking.
I think that's a good thing, I live at the back of, back of the store, and you know, the area there, and there's not much room to do anything else.
That's right.
Oh, did they, has there been any discussion about making repairs of the damage that they have done, that's gonna be just in a bad shape within a year?
Yes, um, what I, what I'd like to do is, is make a specific determination about which sections need to be replaced. I don't think there are large sections, but there are some, so I wanna make, I wanna make a determination on exactly how much. And, and get a price from Paget for that repair, and I'll, I'll share that with Courtney.
Can those repairs be made after the asphalt goes down?
They can.
I don't think they can.
It's not preferred, it's not preferred, but they can.
I think they cracked the curving, but I don't know, I need to go back, but the sidewalk and the gutter, I don't think they cracked the gutter.
I, I think, I think there's some in the gutter.
There's good chips there on the gutter.
Right, and some of, some of those cracks can be repaired with an epoxy, as long as it's not a wide crack, they can repair that in place, and we'll, we'll make that determination as well.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Rose, thank you.
Alright, anything else for Mr. Large? Okay, then, we'll move on to the advisory board reports, waterfront partnership.
Keisha, would you pass those pictures around? I'm passing around an update, it's, it's a, it's a set of pictures, so. So, since some of you haven't had a chance to come down and see how the renovations are going at the old City Hall, those are just some photographs that we were, we took for another purpose, and I thought it would be nice to share with you, as well as just a brief outline of some preliminary thinking on how we're gonna organize upstairs. But I think you would all agree that it looks dramatically improved from the way that it was before, and those floors are gorgeous and, so we are real pleased, and we're working with the contractor to continue all of the other parts that are not so visible to the public. And we'll be, we think we can have everything done in time to close the grant out without any extensions or any problems, so we'll be hopeful that that will continue. Godfrey Builders is a wonderful contractor, he's just very hands-on with all of the subs, and it's made it so much more, he is there when things aren't just perfectly right. The new air conditioner will be installed on the 21st, and supposedly they're gonna install the back door to the office tomorrow, so hopefully that will, that will all go well. We've continued, up until 3 o'clock this afternoon, and for the last couple of weeks, to continue to look for any kind of grant funding on the state cycle to pay for a wheelchair lift in the building. And for the last year, they have told me that the state cannot use historic preservation funds to put in a wheelchair lift if it wasn't part of the original building. And I knew that wasn't right, because I know buildings that they have put lifts in, but, you know, you just keep going on. Anyway, today, the guy called and said he'd continued his research, and he had discovered that yes, you can use historic preservation funds, but we have less than three weeks to get that done. And so, it's, it's just not possible to do it, because we would have to come up with probably approximately $12,000 worth of match. And I know, unless you guys just, somebody wants to pull out a checkbook and write me a check for $12,000, don't write it on our family account, because there is no, not that much money in it. The, so I can't get a grant this time around from the state, which is very disappointing, because I kept insisting that I was right, and it turned out for a chance, I was right. But anyway, the guy was very apologetic, but he said, you know, you have to do all this stuff. So we will start having bake sales, and do some serious fundraising. We're thinking of putting out a GoFundMe kind of an account to see if people would like to donate. So far, we have $500 towards the, the match for the elevator, for the wheelchair lift. And so we'll be looking for, this time next year, I'll be back with a proposal to, to have that all paid for, and propose a grant for that. I am pleased to say that I went to the Caravelle High School Union on Saturday, and we have a plan for what to do with the trophy. And it was amazing what everybody could do, thinking together about these things, and so we're looking forward to, to finding, working with the folks that stepped forward. At the end of it, Harry Gray finally, several people kept saying, get Harry Gray to build us a trophy case, he's a builder. But of course, Harry, Harry's not like a builder himself personally, but I think Harry can get somebody to build it, or perhaps purchase one. So he is going to be responsible as soon as we tell him how big it needs to be, and Mr. Putnall, Mr. Buzz Putnall volunteered his wife to make those determinations for us, so. us, so I thought it was a very interesting experience, but we got it being addressed by the high school classes from the school, so that's the way it really ought to be. And the other thing that I gave you before the meeting was a copy of very nice speech that Mel Kelly, former mayor Mel Kelly, gave at the 10-year anniversary celebration for the museum, and it was really quite charming, because she was there when the original waterfront partnership application was done and all that, and she's worked there as a docent from time to time, so she was really nice, very personal and lovely. And the ice cream was still frozen, I don't know how that happened, but it really was wonderful. And that's really all of my remarks at this point, and we would be glad to, if you would like a support letter from the waterfront partnership, if you will just send me something like you.
I've got, I have an example, sample mail.
I knew that you did.
All my emails are ready to send out in the morning, I was just waiting for Caribou support, because we've got to, I need to get those before the city's email.
And we'll be glad to give you back a letter as quickly as maybe as tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need a donation right now?
To the?
Because of the elevator.
Yes, you can, you certainly can.
Yes, yes, yes. Yay! That's wonderful, thank you very much. Don't put any more zeros on it, okay? No more zeros. This is wonderful, thank you, that really helps. Oh, I did want to tell you that we had as many people come to the museum on just the festival day this year as we had all of April last year.
Wonderful.
So the festival got a lot of people here, even though it was somewhat reduced, but actually, I kind of liked it better. I shouldn't have said that.
Well, when I read all of the improvements that had happened over at the Justice Building, you know, I'm anxious to go up there and see, and I mean, the floor is beautiful, Mr. Magnus, and I said, it looks like a dance floor.
It does. Well, there were dances there back in, the USO used to be there during World War II, and they had dances up there, but it didn't, it looked like Battleship Gray, you know?
It's beautiful, very nice. And I just want to say too, just as a reminder, that the McKissick Management Plan, that's just merely in grant application form right now, you know, so if it's awarded from the DEP, you know, it's just in the application stage.
Well, just whatever we can do to help, but we've been committed to it for a long time.
Yes, I understand, so, and this time, the grant includes funding for conflict resolution of professional staff to come in and manage the workshops, so that'd be a good thing, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, do you all have questions for Ms. Tamra? All right, thank you very much for your service, I appreciate it. Okay, next, we have the Economic Development Council, of which we have none, and by the way, I'll just ask, how often were you all planning on meeting, or have you all even got to that?
We discussed quarterly, or as needed, did not have unnecessary meetings.
Okay. Yeah, because at what time of the day have you all talked about?
It's still also in discussion, there is some, there was some very much concern about having it an hour ahead of the Caribou City Commission meeting, because it just really puts a strain on the timing.
I don't think that's a good idea either.
It's in discussion phase, the timing and the duration of the meeting.
It probably is whenever's the best time for our meeting.
Yeah, that would be a good thing, but no, not an hour before, you don't, you might run long, or Courtney has things to do, the commissioner has things to do, and maybe some of the others might be making a presentation, and that's just too stressful. And I've seen them come out of those meetings and, so, okay, the Caribou Aviation and Fast
Hi, good evening, everybody. Yes, they, I went to the FDOT, they had a district free meeting, myself, Courtney Hunter, and Miranda. It was really informative, they're changing a lot of their processes, they're making it better, and they're also gonna be watching things a lot closer, the money and how the projects are handled. They talked about when they allocate the money in July, they look back over the track record of how we've handled things. We've had some problems with our hangar, the noon hangar, the pavement, and the delinquent rent that they're well aware of, so things like that, and, you know, of course, every quarter has their things too. They're gonna begin tracking that on the JESIP, where it's a Florida database that Courtney has access to, so we'll be able to see where we stand with our projects and what they're looking at. So rather than being a little bit arbitrary like it has been, it'll be right there for us to see. We've got everything in place, I think, to put going forward, we should run into problems we have in the past. The electricians are out there today with the taxiway lights, they have gotten the runway working, and they, today they're able to get the taxiway lights working, but they need some more parts, so they've got the problem solved, they're gonna get the right parts for it, and as soon as the cars come in, they'll be back. The fuel system was, the storm Thursday night, it hit somewhere close by the fuel system. It has a lightning resistor there, it blew out a couple circuits in that, and some of it was allowed to go to one circuit breaker box, circuit board, and it blew that board out. So they replaced, they've got those on order, and as soon as they replace them, we'll have a fuel backup. Master Plan, we have two additional chapters that I'm reviewing now, and as soon as, hopefully early next week, we'll be able to finish up the rest of it. Air Force Inspection, Dustin and the crew went out there Wednesday and just did a fantastic job cutting the grass out here. They quit all the equipment away, left it in really good shape. It's the best the airport's looked in quite a while, and they were really impressed, the guy that came for the inspections today was really impressed with it. So thanks to Dustin and Rogue for that. That's all, do you have any questions?
Well, thank you, Pam, we appreciate all of your service and your reports, and for going over to these meetings, traveling on your own expense, we certainly appreciate that, in kind service. And yes, they did a great job out at the airport, I guess it was on Monday, and maybe some Tuesday, Monday, they were, yeah, and they actually host off the Monmore, so it looks very good, everything's in order, we've been ordering the new sod that's out there, and all the banks are taking hold, and so if we can just get some power and start collecting some rent.
It'll be in good shape.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you, sir. And I will say, today is eight weeks since Mr. Cappy said they would be finished in three weeks. Okay, we'll move on forward, I see Mr. Magnus is here to the Caribou HR Committee, presentation tonight.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
May of the past, and the Caribou Human Resource Committee met two times during the month of April. April 15th was the first meeting, and at that meeting, we reviewed the actions of the commission on the meeting in the April meeting, and we were really, I think delighted would be the word to say, about having the evaluation form approved, and also the evaluations actually starting this month that Courtney announced, I was really glad to hear that, so that was two nice accomplishments of the Human Resource Committee, and to get that all in place along with all the job descriptions over the past year. So, now, we also took an initial look at the Advertise and Specifications, what's our, what, what? Advertise and Specification Package that was approved by the commission in April to seek out and advertise for an HR consultant to assist with our policies and procedures. And at that April 15th meeting, Tony provided us with a letter that he had from research he had done in the past, and we kind of took a look at that letter and got some of the language and got some of the issues that might be helpful in developing that document to submit to you for the advertisement specifications package. So, on the meeting on April 24th, well, in the interim before that meeting, Courtney sent out copies of that letter to all the committee members, so that we could familiarize ourselves more with what, some of the language and some of the things that we might include in that document that I believe was submitted to the commissioners, is that right, Courtney, for this meeting?
They have it on the table in front of me, several on my pageant seat before me.
Okay, so that's our, that's a draft proposal for the advertisement. We, Courtney provided us with a draft copy on that meeting on April 24th, and we took it from there, and we made some additions, we made some changes, the format was changed somewhat, and what you have now is kind of the, a draft of what we're submitting for an advertisement for a human resource consultant, to help with the next phase of the Human Resource Committee's work. I think the committee is pretty unanimous in the opinion that at this point in time, to handle the policies and procedure manual, and also wage salary and benefit package comparisons, that we really do need a consultant to look over those issues and those documents. We feel that the work of the committee while it's not over, I think it's coming down to a point where we would like to help with the transition for a consultant, should you decide to hire one, and we have a meeting scheduled this month, well, we have one meeting scheduled on May 22nd, which we will convene a committee to, if work is available, and see what we are in the whole process. So that's about where we're at right now, and...
Okay, well, we thank you so much, and for all of your work, and no, I think I agree, it's not time yet to disband the HR Committee, but you all have done some good work, and we're going to, we did motion and vote to advertise for a human resource professional consultant, so we will be doing that eventually, but we didn't vote yet to hire one, so we'll have to see, you know, what that costs and what it entails, and then, you know, we may have to resort back to the HR Committee. So, I mean, I'm surprised that you all were able to put these specifications together so quick, I mean, I'm just, I'm just real good, you know, it's a good thing. And do you all have a recommendation? Now, you know, generally when we advertise, we put an ad in newspapers, and that's what we do, so.
I don't know if we have a recommendation on how to advertise it, I mean, we discussed in the meeting that we would suggest, I guess, that we have at least three consultant firms have the specification package given to them, to see what kind of responses you get from them. I don't think we made a recommendation about it, we did discuss that possibility.
Generally, we don't just, we don't just reach out, pick out someone.
We have a court files under the $25,000 entourage, a lot of times, a lot of grants require you to put it out to bid, but this isn't a grant, it's coming out of city money that can be in the left. I mean, you could reach out to a couple of firms and get prices for three or four, or you could bid it out.
Mayor, with our discussion in consideration, I'd like to make a motion, if it's within our realm of our policy, city standards and policies and legal legality, for us to go out with these specifications and get a minimum of three written quotes from the professionals in that field, and let's see what comes up.
Okay, well, okay, so we have a motion to advertise, is that what you're saying, to advertise?
No.
To solicit? To solicit? Okay, who, do you have someone picked out?
I don't have nobody picked out, there's lots of possibilities.
All right.
Yes, I don't have any individual pick out.
No, I mean, to solicit.
Yes, yes, we have some folks to solicit.
And who are they?
There's some labor attorneys in Tallahassee, and on the phone book, I mean, I've looked at a lot of them, and a year ago, I communicated with some of them, which I brought to this board when I was here, and I still have that information, so. But yes, we have possibilities to go out and reach out to.
And I think one thing I did not mention, I mean, we looked at other sources of information to come up with this specifications package, it wasn't all based on one thing, I mean, I reviewed several firms and information in the internet, and brought in a list of suggestions to the committee that should be included in on the specifications package.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Melander, do we have a second? Okay. Do we have discussion? All right. The motion on April 4th was, advertise for request for proposals from human resource professionals to review and make recommendations to the city's personnel policy contingent on an advertisement specifications package being developed and delivered by the HR Committee. The title of this, and I don't know, I hope you wouldn't, you know, use this, this says, the city of Caribou is requesting for proposals for an employment law firm to offer the city on an annual basis, following. So there, you know, in the motion, there was nothing about a law firm, it didn't say anything about a law firm, there was nothing about consulting on an annual basis. This includes provide employment law training, which is, you know, an idea, but that wasn't included in the motion, and this is a good example, I mean, this is a good core example, but when I see one item that does not have passages that were directly copied out of this letter that was sent to Commissioner Melander last January of 18, and the items, item one, item three, item four, and there's four, five items, they're copied pretty much directly out of this proposal from the prisoner group, and so if this is someone that you all reach out to with this application, with this request for proposal, that doesn't look good. It doesn't look good from the city. I think you've got a good core here, it's got some good words in here, but maybe we need to change it up a little bit and advertise in the newspaper like we normally do, we could advertise in the Tallahassee paper, the Jacksonville paper, Pensacola, I would suggest Appalachian Times, because there's no one here like that. But we did not request for an employment law firm, once you do that, then you're cutting out the whole realm of HR consultants, which even some auditing firms do HR consulting. HR consulting professionals would include an employment law firm if an employment law firm did request to step up. So that is, it's unfortunate, I'm like Commissioner Melander on the last... I'm like Commissioner Melander on the last, on the motion to advertise for a superintendent. He liked part of it, but not the other part of the motion. And I'm so glad you all put this together and, and my point of view, have a, have a good core example here. I think it needs to be more in tune with the motion that was made and accepted. So I will say that my vote will be no. And I would suggest that we come back next month to the agenda item and not to prolong this. We've got a lot of people here, a lot of items to move forward with. So that's my discussion. Is there any further discussion?
I think one of the things we, we did have somewhat of a struggle trying to find the right language to use at that time.
And it's.
Well, we originally brought this to the intention of the commission. We did express that, one of the things that, that we had concerns about was the laws that govern policies and procedures. So I think that's where the law firm comes from.
Right. And it's good to, it's good to use this type thing as a reference. I know I, I go online and look at all kinds of things to use for references and, but to copy it, the passages word for word, and then to change it and to say advertise for a law firm on an annual basis, that is not with the motion. You know, I mean, it wouldn't have a problem if you all come back and ask, well, can you, can we do this or that? But I would just have to say no on it for now and take it and make some revisions to it. And we do have agreed that we want to send out to advertise. We need help on reviewing the personnel policy and all of the wage and hour benefits, compensation package, benefit package, all of that needs to be compared to similar cities and any of our, you know, our discrimination acts and all of these things that are listed in here. But it needs to be, it needs to not be copied directly from one proposal and now directed to a law firm. I mean, that just, that, that does not look good coming from the city. So anyway, that's what I have to say.
Well, I'm not here speaking for myself, I'm speaking for the committee and I know, but I think that the committee would be perfectly willing to take another look at that and perhaps at our meeting on May 22nd and see if we can make the revisions you're talking about. I mean, I like to hear from other members of the committee too about that, Tony and Courtney.
I think that'd be fine to make another look at it.
But we haven't voted, we need to vote, so. But we're still in discussion.
This is a real complicated thing for me and I'm having trouble grasping the total context of it.
So, but we're still in discussion. All right. Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Melander and a second by Commissioner Walden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I do. And so that, that motion did not carry. So.
Was that four to one?
I'll go with no on this.
Okay. So we have.
Very nice.
So we'll ask them to please, either we can, we can take a, we have the choice now with the, with the commission, all of this, we can either take this and review it, revise it, and suggest to where we want to send it. We refer to recommendations, just, you know, advertise in a newspaper or pick out some firms and send it out to some HR professional consulting firms. And that would include the, if you advertise for that, that includes the whole gamut. Now, if you pick out, if you're going to say you're going to send to HR consulting firms, then you cut out the law firm. And maybe you do want a law firm.
Well, the motions are being made to advertise.
Yes.
So it's just the actual advertisement that's going out.
Right. The motion's been made to advertise, not to, not to solicit. So.
So if you would feel more comfortable as a, as a body revising that form, that'd be fine with us. Well, I guess I gotta speak myself, that'll be fine with me if you wanted to do it that way.
Let me ask the commission what they would like to do. Do you all want to revise this form and put it on as an agenda item or let the HR committee make it more, more generic? Not, not copy passage per passage from a proposal that was sent to a commissioner? Or do we, do we want to send?
If they want to stay with.
Okay. That's fine with me as well. Okay. Is that all right? Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll let you all have another go at it. Okay.
And I would propose to the committee, and I don't know if Charlie and the chief ahead today, I don't know.
No, sir.
I'm looking like I'm going to see him, right?
Yeah.
But, you know, we'll be in contact with each other, communicate with each other. And I, for Tony and Courtney, I would suggest that we use that May 22nd meeting, which is already scheduled to do that.
Okay. And if you need more time, that's fine too.
Okay.
But you got, you all have time to think about it and I appreciate your service too, Mr. Magin.
No, thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we want to take a break here before we move into our new business? Which we've got quite a bit of new business. Okay. Then we'll take about, did we say five minutes, but it ends up being 10, a recess. Okay. We'll reconvene the Carabel City Commission meeting on Thursday, May 2nd, 2019. And next on the agenda is new business. Item one, discussion of possible action concerning request for support of Sea Quarters Youth Tournament in the amount of $500 requested by Ms. Mary Lohon, Lohon, and she's waiting at the podium.
Good afternoon, good evening. I think it's about that time. It may not be yours. It's, it's not on. We can push it up. Right there. Now it's on.
Okay.
I would just like the opportunity to thank y'all for everything that y'all have done in the past for the children's tournament. This is the 15th year. Last year, we had 233 kids sign up for the tournament. 218 showed up to fish. And some of your city employees participated and helped. If I didn't have volunteers, we couldn't do this. My budget for the actual tournament is $9,925. That's how much it takes. We give each child, we guarantee the first 125, a shirt, visor, and a rod and reel. Now, a lot of that is in kind. Fish Florida gives us the rod and reels, but we have to buy the shirts and the visors. We give them a hot dog dinner and all that type of thing. They have a great time and we have kids that come back and say grandma and granddaddy so they can fish the tournament.
And you have trophies.
Yes, we do. And they're not participation trophies. They are first and last question. You have to earn them.
That's good.
You have to earn them. And if you want to see something exciting and see some little children that are just ecstatic when they win a little trophy about six inches high with fish on it, they think they have really done something. And from time to time, we have a fishing show that comes from Panama City that actually does a video and shows it on Panhandle Outdoors. I think it's channel 13 at, I think, 6:30 our time. And he usually does, if he can come, he will come and do a video. And it's a great advertisement for City Carabel because the first thing he does is he comes into the city limits, he shows our sign, welcome to Carabel, and talks about it. So I would appreciate it very much if you can see forth to donate in the past if you give me $500.
All right. Ms. Lohon comes to the commissioner of the CRA board most every year, well, every year for the past 15 years. And, you know, I'm going to recommend a motion to approve her request and.
I make a motion to approve her request and make a motion to put this under a line item where it'll, she'll have to come back next year to add.
We can make.
She can come if she likes, but.
Well, if it keeps gets bigger and Carabel gets bigger and collects more taxes, we might ask for more money. You can never tell.
We just might give you more.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Mathis, no. Matt.
Mathis.
Second by Commissioner Allen.
Cal.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Cal Allen. Cal Allen's coat photographer. Okay.
Our gallery.
Best show in town.
Yes, our gallery. All right. So what we want to do is approve the $500 request and in the same motion, go ahead and add this as a line item in our general fund. So we have that motion and a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion? Now, what I will say, when you do that every year, when, what time of the year, in July, is a good time, send a little notice to staff.
I will.
That you, you know, you're requesting funding and then you, you talk about, well, it may go up if the, if the tournament gets bigger, well, then you need to, you know, increase that amount on your request.
I will.
We have several nonprofits under a line item category.
Well, I might say that the businesses in Tallahassee as well as Carabel is very good. I mean, some people can't give $25. Some people give 50, some people give 100. And we've lost some of, some of the bigger businesses that has given us, you know, $200 in the past, but they have been gracious, you know, to support us and we put their names on the back of their T-shirts.
Okay. All right. So any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. And you can stay or you can sit because the next item has your name. And it's item two, discussion of possible action concerning the LDR section 7.01.01.04 height restrictions requested by Mary Lohon and Bob Lindsay, Mariners Landing Homeowners Association. And I'm going to refer this right over to our city attorney, Mr. Hartman, to give us a background on this.
All right. And due to some diligent work on Ms. Lohon's half, and we've talked about it with staff and everything else, this issue has, has been resolved. But just for the record, wanted to make it clear that the height limit in the city of Carabel is the subject of a referendum from 2007. And the height, this is, this is, this is what governs the height of a structure in the city of Carabel, is that no building shall be constructed within the municipal limits of the city of Carabel that exceeds 35 feet in height when measured from the first finished floor of the building. And that's the referendum language, which would control over any other, anything else that was either vague or contradicts it or anything else, but that would control it. If the city wants to ever change the height limit or restriction here, then it would also have to be by referendum.
So I would ask you, not that I'm interested in changing the height, but it would have to be by referendum, but I see where they, they had, they did an ordinance first back in 2007. So you would have to go by, do an ordinance to go, and then go to, it was an ordinance to go to referendum.
This was, yeah, a little bit, and I could obviously check if in our charter or anything else, it mandates this procedure. This procedure's a little odd.
Okay.
And it may be perfectly appropriate, but it's odd in my experience regarding a referendum. Some, you know, they included it along in the ballot for the municipal election is what they did, they just added it to the ballot. But, and maybe they needed an ordinance to do that because this ordinance doesn't establish the height limit the referendum did.
That's correct. But thank you for your, your background and repressure on that. Do we have any questions or comments regarding our height restrictions here in Carabel?
I'd like to make a comment. If we have an 18-foot flood zone level and then add 35 feet to that, then we're talking about a 53-foot height. So, I mean, to me, that seems to be plain because of the delicate situation we have here on the coast.
So you're saying the first habitable floor, livable floor.
Finish.
Finish floor would be the first floor of the home.
Exactly right. Yep.
And 35 feet above that.
To the peak of the roof.
Yes.
And, and our hands are tied.
Oh, I understand. That's not a problem. The problem was it was being stated from the grade 35 foot to the peak.
No, no, it's not.
So we just need to get that straight.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And you have a copy of it.
Yes, ma'am. If anybody wants to find the ordinance, it's actually on your website. All you got to do is type in building height and it'll pop it up.
All right. Thank you very much. Dan, do we need to correct the LDR?
We got to do a lot of correcting.
Or can we just leave it be?
We can leave it be for now as long as we're in the LDR.
Well, the LDR says inhabitable, which means habitable, livable. I'm sure there could be some question on that.
And again, we, because everybody's talked about something this last couple of days, the lawyer part of me comes up with little scenarios where you could try to steer around things. Yep. Around the LDR language, but the referendum language is actually well thought out. Better thought out than the LDR language.
This is Mr. Lindsay.
Hello. Now, I just wanted to be clear that it is from the first inhabitable floor, which is above feet. So along.
I mean, we make this, I mean, this is, and again, this would be, we have never been confronted with this, but this is one that, again, lawyers think of stuff, but we were talking about it. And the difference between inhabitable floor, you know, if you did a screened-in porch or just an open air area below your, then two floors above, that would be a finished floor because it would be a slab or some sort of finished surface, but it wouldn't be habitable.
Right.
So you would then be up an additional, you know, you could do a 12-foot majestic, you know, open area above the pilings, above a finished floor, but it wouldn't be an habitable area, and that thing could be up 60, 70 feet.
Right.
And we wouldn't want that. I mean, that, that isn't the intent.
Yeah.
And the referendum would prevent that.
So the finished floor would be the floor that you walk on.
Exactly. It is a finished floor.
That you live on.
Yeah. Some sort of finish on it.
It's above our flood.
Exactly.
Okay. And I just want to say for public record, we've got quite a few people from different areas of the county outside of the city limits. And what we're talking about now is, is pertains directly in the city limits. Your county guidelines for height restrictions are a little different.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. All right. Item three. Here they come, they're waiting in line. Discussion of possible action concerning planning and zoning board recommendations regarding special exception to allow for 1001 Highway 98 East to operate as a bed breakfast requested by Jamie Thomas.
Thank you all. My name's David Jackson Summers. Commissioners and Madam Mayor, thank you for having us tonight, put us on the agenda. I'll be very brief because I don't think there's much to say. Mr. Thomas has already gone in front of the zoning board on this, which has recommended approval of this special exception. I believe you have all the materials to look at as far as all the procedures that are required by your code before you can even get zoning approval. And all that's happened, so just for here, if you do have any questions, otherwise we would just ask you to approve.
Okay. Well, I had a couple of questions, just, you know, for public knowledge. Are you, are you installing a kitchen or how will you do your bed and your breakfast?
I'll let Mr. Thomas answer.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Solomon, my name's Jamie Thomas.
Hi. I want to say the building looks really nice and I'm anxious to see the final color. I'm tired of paint at the top of the hill.
You are the only one.
Okay.
Yes.
So.
I haven't decided on the cover just yet.
Okay. It's very nice. We appreciate all the improvements you've done there. Now, will you be registered with the Department of Revenue for tourist bed tax?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's all, that's all the questions I had. Do you all have any questions?
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Mathis.
My second.
A second by Commissioner Melander. And discussion. I would just say I like B&Bs. I like the idea of a B&B. They're all over the country, small, one, two, two-bedroom B&Bs like you're going to have there. And it fits in with the, with the B&B that's proposed across the street. And so is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries. And thank you all for waiting.
Thank you.
Okay. Bye-bye. All right. Item four, discussion of possible action concerning planning and zoning recommendations regarding site plan review for Dollar General at 608 Highway 98 East. And we have Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't, Rick Reams?
Reams.
Reams?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. My name is Scott Reams with the Hickstetter Companies in Daphne, Alabama. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to answer any questions of the board and request approval of our site plan.
Okay. Now, the site plans have passed the project review by Mr. Russell, our city engineer, meets the border management district and FDOT requirements. All your permits have been obtained. The commission, you all may remember, we recently abandoned the alleyway that separated that property so a business could be developed there. that property so a business could be developed there. Planning and zoning has recommended the, the site plan, and nearby property owners have been identified, and they've had an opportunity for public comment at the P&amp;Z, they may want to speak, at the P&amp;Z meeting, they may want to speak now. And the community is anxious for a new, larger store that will offer more diversity and at affordable prices, so.
Make motion to approve.
All right then, we have a motion to approve, okay. We have public comment down.
Oh, right.
May we have a public comment? Would you like to speak, sir?
I would.
Okay, please come forward.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Joe Cuffel. Joe Superintendent Cuffel, we're the owners of the adjacent property contiguous to the new Dollar General, and when we were in the planning and zoning committee meeting, I had a little bit of reservation about blocking off the drive-through, because that would leave us one entrance on Seventh Street and not even on US 19, which in the spirit of goodwill, I like the idea of having the new Dollar General, I think we're all anxious for, and I think it'll help the community. One of the things that was my concern was at least to have availability with our Plaza to have access from the Dollar General, because we know that if there's not driving traffic, there certainly is going to be pedestrian traffic. And I just wanted assurance from Dollar General that there would be a way to have pedestrian traffic and make sure that there's ways so that they're not going through soils or over bushes to get between businesses, because then I think it's not the kind of partnership that at least the businesses would want to deal with. It's not, I, I'm not clear, I guess, on how the public would get between one business and another. It's not uncommon for people to park and go between businesses, and that's the way usually is done out here. So, since they can't drive through there, and they can't drive from Dollar General to my business, I would like them to, I'd like some assurances that there's going to be a, some kind of pedestrian ability to be able to get to my business. I think it's unreasonable.
Okay, I see Mr. Reams looking at the site plan. Is that what you're doing, sir?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Oh, you are, so I saw that. And then I'm looking at Russell as well, because I know he studied that, and I don't have it with me. And, okay, I, I mean, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board on that, yes?
Your, your property is adjacent to the east, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So there is a public sidewalk within US 98 that customers could, could use, and to my knowledge, there's not a code requirement for a pedestrian interconnection, which I think is what you're asking for between the two properties. Basically, it's just about a sidewalk that would connect the Dollar General to, to your, to your property that's adjacent.
I don't think that's unreasonable, and it doesn't even have to be, what, what I'm confused on is there's been a little bit of, I guess, to my mind, a little bit of misinformation. I was okay with the ability of not being able to drive through and we basically be cut off, vice versa, from traffic, but I thought that there was, and I believe that there was going to be able to have pedestrian traffic. I didn't know they would have to walk all the way out to the sidewalk, then all the way down the sidewalk, then all the way down Seventh Avenue, and then come back into our property. It seems downright ridiculous when they're 20, 30 feet away. But, and I don't think that's asking for a tremendous amount of accommodation from Dollar General, considering all the effort and energy they apparently put into this. Well, they've obviously put into it. What I'm saying is, I'm not really clear on when you walk out of the front of Dollar General and you want to walk to my sidewalk in front of my business, how you get there. Are they going to walk over? Are they going to trip over? Do they have to climb over a hedge? Do they have to scale a wall? Climb Mount Everest or what? And I don't think it's fair to assume that they have to go out to 98, walk down 98 and come back in. But, again, that's my opinion. So if I could get some clarification, it would be, it would be great to know.
Well, Mr. Cuffel, we understand, you know, we do understand your concern. The, the site plans have not been developed that way. They would have to, I'm thinking, go back to the drawing board. I mean, everything is, is approved at this point, and it's, it's, as, as Mr. Large says, there is a, a public sidewalk there, not, not far. What, what is the setback? How far is the sidewalk from the buildings?
I mean, I wouldn't think they would have to go all the way to Seventh Street. There could be an, an.
An entrance in front of Mr. Cuffel's.
In front of his line.
That's all I'm speaking of, is something from my building to their building where they could walk to the front, from the front of my building to their building.
And maybe, you know, I just don't know. I don't know why that wasn't done. It could have, have something to do with some codes, regulations, their liability at the Dollar General. I, I honestly have no idea, and there's no, I don't, as Mr. Large said, there's no requirements to provide connectivity between the store front system.
That's correct.
When I was a planning commissioner before, and I believe it's almost stated that there would be access between, and it wasn't really made clear that they would walk 80 feet down, 90 feet over, 80 feet down when they're 20 feet away. All I'm saying, and I don't think it's unreasonable, is if they walk out the front door and they want to go to the building, do they really have to walk out to 98? And all I would, all I'm really asking for, Scott, is maybe a little clarification. It's a little different than what I was, I believe led to believe, and I'm just wondering if, we, we don't have car access, and now we are not going to have foot traffic access.
Now, I will have to think about, I have, I'm thinking about this. Now, we, we reduced the number of parking spaces already that, that the requirement was, so they have two less parking spaces. And if vehicles are allowed, or customers are allowed to park at the Dollar General and walk over to your business, now your patrons are using the Dollar General's parking lot. And maybe, I'm just trying to think, why, how this happened this way, and that could be why the Dollar General has designed their, their parking lot, because they have a certain number of spaces, and they don't, you know, it's, it's hard to accommodate parking for businesses as well, additional businesses on top of the, the crowds that they're going to have in a 10,500-square-foot building. And they will have a lot of people in there. I'm understanding they're going to have to hire nine additional people. So those people are going to have to have parking spaces as well, their employees. And, you know, you, you have several businesses in your mall there, which I'm very proud of, and a beautiful new sign, and I'm, I'm anxious for your, your restaurant to open up, a nice display at the, at the Riverfront Festival. But that's most likely why the Dollar General has, has made their parking lot the way that it is, so that they're serving their patrons, and that when their patrons come there to spend money in their shop, they have a place to, to park.
Additionally, my patrons will have a place to park, and then they will go over and probably spend money at the Dollar General, too.
They probably will.
I think it's a two-way street here. All I'm saying is, is that I don't think, if, if there is purposely, first there was a drive-through, then there's not a drive-through, then there's a pedestrian access, and now there's not pedestrian access. And it's hard to tell from the plans whether there's a deep swale, whether there's a hedge. Could there possibly be some clarification? And I don't care if it's grass. If they're planting grass, and we talked about planting grass, and they're walking over on grass, then we have to spend a nickel on sidewalk. But the point is, and human nature is, that they will walk out of that front door, or my customers will walk out of my front door, they'll go through the hedge, behind the tree, and whatever. So I just, I, I would just like clarification. Is there a hedge between my property? Is there, I see there's a tree there. Trees are nice. I love trees. But is there, is there a way that there can be access without them walking straight out through traffic, out to the sidewalk, and around to get to my business, and vice versa? I mean, that's a two-way street.
And, and I believe you have the plans there, and from my recollection, it's just a four-inch curb, and it's basically separating your parking lot from their parking lot. So in my mind, it's kind of like the current Dollar Store, where everybody parks along the side, and they step over the curb.
Oh, yeah, they park in the right of way and step over the curb.
And step over the curb. So the majority of the people will use that, the shorter way of traffic. Now, it's not going to be handicap accessible, but the majority of the people will step over the curb and walk over.
And the Dollar General, as it is where it sits now, already has, so what Ms. Keisha's talking about, they have so many customers, their parking lot is full many times, and they have to park in the right of way.
There's a six-inch curb, and then there is a green space between, following parallel with the six-inch curb. I would just like clarification. Is that green space grass? Is it?
It's, we cannot predict what it's going to be. They could put a hedge and it could die. They could put, they could put a hedge and they could use it.
Easy, easy answer to all of those questions, Scott.
Happy to address the board's question and Mr. Cuffel's comments. The area between the end of our parking aisle and the property line is going to be used, going to be grass and used for stormwater management. There is a existing sidewalk, which is a public right-of-way, which customers can go between the properties on public sidewalk.
Okay. Well, so there's going to be a swale between there, or, see, you can't, it doesn't say there are elevations, but this is a little bit frustrating as a smaller business.
What paint are you looking at?
I understand, sir. I do like your stain.
With most of the businesses that I'm accustomed to, there's always a division at property lines, sometimes a division. And the four-inch, six-inch curb is what I understood was going there, is, is a common practice to have that division between property lines. And if it's grassy and it's landscape, I'll put it that way, I don't know what, that's up to, but that's pretty common as well. And, but I do understand this, this man's concern, and I think that the Dollar Store representative pretty much answered that question with natural vegetation and stormwater management.
And I, I don't know how this board could dictate to the Dollar General or any business that you have got to, you've got to provide access for your neighbor. I mean, that would be like, if Commissioner Walden and I live next door to each other, and the commission says, well, Commissioner Walden, you've got to provide access for Mayor La Pas to walk across your property. And I just don't think we can do that.
We, we met early on in the spirit of goodwill, and I see how far they give those steps. Thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry you feel that way, Mr. Cuffel. Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I have one more moment of the board's time.
All right.
For brief. Just to give you an update on timeline for the project, we're looking to start construction in mid-July, to be completed by the end of the year with the new store. The store is going, the existing store is about 8,000 square feet. The new store will be over 10,600 square feet, increased refrigerated and frozen space. We were also excited to hear that Dollar General has approved the store for an open-air produce cooler, which will be located in the front of the store. The new store will provide for increased receiving room space, so there would be no need for an existing container, get it seasonal or not, just will be able to accommodate that. And it will have, obviously, an increased merchandise assortment for national brand products. So we're excited to be here. We've closed down the one property. We're closing down the other one at the end of the month, and we're ready to get started. We're waiting for our building program.
Okay, and you say that it will have a produce, an, an open-air produce?
Yes, ma'am. It's a new, it's a new feature that the stores have offered for the plus-size stores, which this will be, to meet the demand of the neighborhood.
And you call it a plus-size store?
Yes, ma'am.
And what will it be? And I'm asking you this, my husband is filming, he's, he's zoomed in on you now, we're going to put a little clip.
Perfect, I should put on that in pants, right?
They're, they're arguing amongst themselves, you know, on what it's going to be. So what will it look like? Sopchopi or East Point Dollar General or somewhere in there?
From an exterior perspective?
Yes, sir.
It'll be four-sided, or excuse me, three-sided ethos material with a brick nichia wainscot around the base of the building, with pilasters and a raised parapet in the front. So there won't be any metal that you'll see from the public.
Okay, that'd be very nice. And, and your signage? How, I've had some comments on signage, the roadways signage.
Right, we're going to have a, a power sign that's noted on the site plan in the front, and we'll have one wall sign above the front doors.
Okay, do you all have, now, we're, we've had, we have a motion, but we moved into discussion without a second, but we had to have public comment. So I'll ask, do you all have any more questions?
No, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a second back, Commissioner Melander. Does, does any one of the public have a, have a comment or question again? All right then, so can I, I'm, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have the permit ready tomorrow.
And then when, when will we expect the bulldoze, sir?
Thank you.
July.
July.
July. Okay.
We'll try to move it up.
All right.
We're working through their schedule.
And how long, once they start, how long is construction?
We should be complete by mid-December, pending weather.
All right, Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, and here we go now. Item five, discussion of possible action concerning planning and zoning recommendations to the LDR regarding R5 and C1 zoning. So we've had someone come forward, one person come forward from an area right here in the, in the immediate area concerned about removal of mobile homes, prohibiting mobile homes in the R5 zone. And, and the, Mr. Dan, would you speak to us about that?
Yes. The, I miss relates to first, first reading on ordinance 472 as well. Well, I'm sorry, are we, are we dealing with the ordinance, or are we talking about?
We're, we're approving to amend the LDR table 2.02.01, to rescind allowable uses in R5 and C1 zoning to include manufactured and mobile homes. And we're, what we, we need to do, I said approve, but we're, we're considering discussion of possible action regarding the recommendation from the planning and zoning board to amend the LDR. And if we amend the LDR, then we will have later on the first reading of the ordinance regarding this. If we approve to amend the LDR, then we will have the ordinance reading shortly at the end of the meeting.
Okay, just, point of order, I thought we did, no, that was just for consideration at P&amp;Z. So on this, this is simply that in R5 and C1, there was a motion at the last meeting to specifically exclude mobile homes, and meaning, Russell may have one of these, but you have modular homes, you have manufacturing homes. As a matter of law, there are certain types of homes that are considered the equivalent of stick-built homes that we cannot, that would not apply here, but, but purely mobile homes, axles on the highway with appropriate DOT stickers, mobile homes would be excluded from R5 and C1. As this has moved forward, and we have on first reading, an ordinance that accomplishes this, that would, again, remove the mobile home in both R5 and C1 zoning districts as a permissible use, they would essentially be prohibited from those areas. There has been, just in last couple days, some folks that have come forward that live in the Sun and Sands area, which is all, which is R5, and just close to Old City Hall there, up 12th Street, and there's some mobile homes in that area, and they were, had concerns that if their home was burned or something happened to it, that they would not be able to go back in there with mobile homes. And that's exactly what the amendment that we're talking about would, would do. And that's exactly what the amendment that we're talking about would do to them. We discussed among staff and the mayor alternatives to that, possibilities, and one of them was that area does border in part the R1 category, which is the dark blue on the zoning map, that does allow, by special exception, mobile homes. And the city, on its own initiative, could, that's another ordinance, that would change the zoning district from R5 to R1 for that portion of the city. But that is a way to potentially accommodate those folks' concerns. If, again, they come to the city and the staff, and the city says, "Yeah, we would like to accommodate those concerns," we have a method to do so. But I obviously wanted to make that clear before we just unilaterally say, "R5, C1, mobile homes." Now, you know, we have some folks in R5 that say, "We don't want mobile homes," but now, we also have some folks in R5 that are living in mobile homes, that if they burn down or wind took them, anything like that, they want, they're saying, "Hey, we want the Sun Avenue," or actually, they say, "We want the right to put a mobile home back in there."
To replace their home.
But, and the city needs to balance and think about, obviously, how to balance those interests with the interest that was expressed at the last meeting, which was to eliminate mobile homes in R5 and C1.
So basically, what we have, we have two areas then that are stick-built, and stick-built subdivisions, but they are zoned R5. And it's permissible, not even by special exception, it's just permissible of someone can move a mobile home into any R5. But two areas have stick-built, and they evolved that way. And those locations have concerned citizens. Then one area, the Sun and Sands subdivision right here, we know, we all know several people that live in here, including Commissioner Melander, that is, the majority, there are a few stick-built, but the majority is mobile or modular. Is that correct in the Sun and Sands subdivision?
Yeah, it's mostly mobile. There's a couple of modulars.
And there's, Mr. Spivey is a stick-built, is that right, and Mr. Jackson? So, he, okay, I don't know. I'm talking about David down the way. Yeah, stick-built. So, and then that also includes some acreage north of Gray Avenue, correct? It's called, still called the Sun and Sands subdivision?
Correct. Those long, narrow, five, 10 acre lots.
All right. So what Mr. Hartman then is saying is that we could move, the commission could move forward immediately to take that Sun and Sands subdivision and make it an R1 zoning, where it would be special exception to allow mobile homes.
Mayor, I've had some calls and...
There would be grandfathered in?
There would not be grandfathered in. I mean, if it burned, then they'd be in, they'd be in R5 still, and it would be no more ones. They couldn't bring one back in.
And I have had calls and concerns.
Yeah, what I would like to do, I would like to make a motion to send it back to P&amp;Z and get input, because some of these people want to go before the P&amp;Z and discuss issues, will, possibilities, and some of the things that Dan has mentioned and others. I would recommend we send it back. We're not in a hurry for it. We're not in a push. Send it back to P&amp;Z and let them look at it again. And here, listen to what the people's needs are. That's a motion I'd make.
Okay. So we have a motion to send back to P&amp;Z. And a second, a motion by Commissioner Melander, a second by Commissioner Mathis. Do we have any public comment? Do we have any public comment? Okay. And now, I just want to say that we do have folks that are concerned about moving mobile homes into their area. There's, I mean, they have a definite...
There's concerns. There is, yes.
They have definite concerns on that. So, Mr. Hartman, and I am concerned of, you know, when you think about someone has the possibility of losing their home, as all of us do, and they might not have the opportunity to replace it because their insurance is only going to replace a mobile home, then, you know, you have concern and empathy and sympathy for that, and you have to try to make every, make something work for everyone. So...
And that's my purpose of requesting to send it back to P&amp;Z, where they can work through some of the issues and come up with a workable solution.
And C1 zoning, I think that we were all, everyone, and even, and many citizens agreed to prohibit mobile homes in the C1 zoning, not even by special exception, which is... All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Melander, a second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any further discussion? Send this back to P&amp;Z.
The Sun and Sands, the only gun suppliers?
And who else is opposed?
You have some outside of the Sun and Sands.
Who is that, so we can notify them?
I don't have anything in writing. I just have some phone calls.
Okay. Well, please notify them and let them know to come to the P&amp;Z. Yes, please do that. So, any other discussion? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. Item six, discussion of possible action on transfer of office-based property to Lanark Village Association. The Lanark Order Sewer District Transfer Agreement was February 2008, and at page eight, under additional noteworthy terms, it includes a list of three properties that were to be, as it says in there, immediately converted to public property purposes simultaneously with closing of the transfer agreement. And the three properties listed were office space, property that was under leased to the LBA, Lanark Village Association, for the boat, the boat lot, and one acre, more or less, to be used by the Lanark Fire, volunteer fire department. The LBA has received its deed for the boat, the Lanark Fire Department has received its deed, but the office space has not yet been deeded to the Lanark Village Association. So we need to go ahead and take care of that issue and clear up all of this, who owns what out there. And is there any comment?
Make the motion if it succeeds. Now, I'll ask a question when we get to that point.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion, I'll call for discussion. We have a motion by Commissioner Melander. Do we have a second?
I'll stay with him.
Okay. Okay. And discussion, sir. Mr. Can't think, Tony Johnson.
I'm Tony Johnson. I'm president of Lanark Village Association. And if it weren't for just a, for George's accident at lunch today, I would never know about this deed or this thing here. And I'm, nobody has proposed Lanark Village Association with any information on what's going on. Right now, the association is in such a financial position that we cannot take on any other property or anything that we would have to pay taxes or insurance on. I guess what I'm saying is, we don't know what's going on.
Okay.
All right, let me, yeah, what the commission would be directing me to do, obviously, Mr. Johnson, it's kind of, it's interesting, right? It's a twist on it. What I was anticipating is the commission would direct me to simply draft a quitclaim deed, as we had done, Attorney Cox had done at the conclusion of last, to fulfill what our obligation was, was to deed this property in addition to the others we already have deeded. I prepare that deed, and we deed it to the Lanark Village Association. Mister, certainly, we can hold tight for, you know, this has been 10 years now, so we can hold tight another couple of months if Mr. Johnson wants to talk to his associates, his board, to determine the way to handle his concern would literally be, I mean, this is the brute force approach, but we would deed them the property, they could deed it right back to the city. So we've complied with our obligation of the agreement, they could deed it back to the city, and then it's our responsibility, just as it has been all this time. And that would show, at least trail, and it would keep everything clean moving forward. If the association does not want this property, I mean, they would have it for a minute before we could, we'd vote deeds, we'd record them in order, and it would be, it would be done.
If they, if you all wanted to give it back.
If they, if they give us that direction, I've not had anybody tell me they don't want it. You're giving property they don't want.
It's bare property. There, do you, there's nothing, it's vacant property. There is a light post of utility pole there with a meter, and we checked the meter number, and it is not a meter that the city of Carabelle is paying for. So it's probably the Lanark Village Association is paying for that meter. And we've had folks come forward in the past, like Ms. Doc Bless, and she keeps, you know, has said many times that where's the deed, this vacant property? It's on Warren Drive. Are you familiar with the location?
I'm not exactly sure. The, I'm not familiar with any.
And there's no building on it.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I, I did not, I'm not aware of it.
And there's, there's, aren't you all an NPO? I don't think you all pay taxes.
No, no.
Okay. You don't pay taxes?
No.
And it's a vacant lot?
It's in between.
Where the office is.
Get where the Oval Office was, right next to the parking lot further.
And in the transfer, and in our, in the main deed of transfer, that is included as a property that belonged, that's part of the Lanark Village Association. But it was not, it wasn't deeded. It got, in fact, I'm going to name all of the documents that were included in that transfer, and I would like the city to send a package of all of that digitally to you all, so that you have every document that is associated with that. So what do you think, sir?
If you give us a little more time to think about it.
Okay.
Because, like I said, we were flat-footed at lunch today.
All right. Commissioner Melander withdrawing his motion?
I'm going to withdraw.
And then withdraw your second, please, sir.
I'll withdraw. I said, make the motion, Mr. Smith.
Okay. So we have a motion to, okay, a motion to table by Commissioner Mathis and a second by Commissioner Melander. Now we're having discussion again.
I'm sorry. I think, I think possibly he's assuming that we're having to pay for the property.
It belongs to you already.
Exactly. And I think that was the misunderstanding when it was presented, as he said during lunchtime, it was, that's what was coming out. So, we may want you to, I'm sorry, I was trying to not say anything.
Let me ask you to do this, since we've jumbled it around, let's just table it at the next meeting, and then you guys can come back at the next meeting and be definite on which course to follow.
I think that's, that's good. And you can come in here and speak with city staff and understand exactly what's happening. And I have a long list of documents that I want city staff to provide you digitally as well. So we have a motion to table by Commissioner Mathis, a second by Commissioner Melander. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And then that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Item seven. Did he take that? You got that mapped, right? Okay, very good. Item seven, discussion of possible action regarding city, use of city-owned property by Lanark Village Dog Club. Mid-month, Ms. Susan Lynn of Lanark brought forth a concern regarding the city of Carabelle allowing Mr. James Lawler, president of Lanark Village Dog Club and club members only, the exclusive access and use of city, water and sewer-owned property at the west corner of Warren Drive and Oak Street. And then I have, I would like for Ms. Lynn to speak first, so that she can explain her concern. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. I've got an abbreviated explanation of why I'm here and my thoughts on this. So it's very abbreviated. The reason I'm here is I requested to use the Lanark Dog Park and was told it had nothing to do with Lanark Village Association, which I am a member of. And there was a lease on the property by an individual, held by an individual, not by the association. I was also told it was for residents of the village use only. I live in Lanark property, not in the village. I discovered the dog park was owned by the city and called and inquired about the lease. Was told there was no recorded lease, and they were unaware of one also at the Water Department. I contacted Mr. Lawler, who assured me he had a lease and stated he had been paying his $1 per year as required the entire time. I asked him to please take a copy to the city, as they had no record. It is my understanding this was done by Mr. Lawler. I am satisfied with Mr. Lawler's agreement and have no intentions of interfering with his and the city of Carabelle's agreement. The lease agreement actually came to light because of all this, on accident. I didn't set out to cause a problem for Mr. Lawler. My intent is to say that if you continue this agreement with Mr. Lawler, a precedent has been set for use of city-owned property to be set up as a dog park with joint liability belonging to the city of Carabelle for dog bites, et cetera, for a dollar-a-year lease. I'm requesting the same rights as an individual for the Lanark area. I have individuals on 98 in the Lanark area that have no place to walk their dog. A dog park is set up for dogs to run free without a leash and is defined to have water, a separate area for small dogs, shade, and sitting supplied for dog owners. I have not found a piece of property yet or a group of volunteers to set up a managing group for said property prior to this request from the city of Carabelle. But I'm requesting the same rights as Mr. Lawler if this is going to have discriminatory use on city property. Please consider my appearance in this conversation as that request. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lynn. Do you all have questions for Ms. Lynn? Okay. All right. Okay. Mr. Lawler?
I'm Jim Lawler. I'm meant to call the president of the Dog Club. Here is the explanation. This is your contract that they signed, and here's a list of all the people who have keys. What it is, there's no charge for it as far as it goes. Right now, I have a broken lock, and I'm trying to find another lock to fit the key, because I got over 45 members. They don't pay nothing. And I gotta, if I make a new key, then I gotta make 45 new keys. So, basically, as I said, you have to live within the units of the village. We don't have space to let our dogs roam around. So we use the dog parks. And they said there's a number of people doing it. And I'm asking you, I've been paying a dollar a year, so I'm asking...
Well, okay. I did, I did ask Miranda, our finance clerk, had she received a dollar a year, and she has no record of receiving the dollar a year. It does, it does talk on there...
I have received from 2012 to 2017. I have a receipt from 2012 to 2017. In 2017, I get $10 in for 10 years.
Do you have those receipts?
I don't have that receipt.
Okay.
But I do have a receipt to 2017.
But the conditions in the, in the letter there, and it's a letter, it's not a lease, it's like a letter of request. Uh, the, uh, and we had to reset, well, you had, you brought it in because it wasn't on, you know, it was not on the city records, we didn't have that in the city records, that letter of request. So you brought that in and I read it. Uh, and the conditions say that the, uh, the Dog Club members' names and addresses and phone numbers will be kept unfiled. And, um, our city staff has, has no record of any of this. Uh, I think, would this be the first time you've seen that list of, of members? Okay, so, okay, Keisha went to make a copy. Uh, and then it talks, and then it talks that, you know, that the lease will be $1 a year, but there is, there, and Mr. Hartman has reviewed this as well, there is no lease. Uh, you know, there's, there's not a lease, so, um, that is, that is actually a letter of request that came to the commission back in December of 10. Uh, and, uh, Commissioner Brown motioned to, uh, approve leasing the property and Commissioner Allen seconded, uh, but there was never a, a lease drawn up or a contract with any kinds of terms or conditions and there's no signed agreement. You know, uh, the, the city attorney has said, we can lease to private properties, the city's done so in the past, but it's significantly below market rates and, you know, if, if the city wants to do that, the commission can do it. But there's a potential liability and you have, uh, he's, he, we've talked about this. He says, there's a couple of things we can do, we can enter into a formal lease with conditions and terms and, and we would pay the attorney to draft a, a contract. Or we can, you know, provide notice that the allowed use would be terminated and that the city would retake possession of the property. I will say there is a shed and if any of y'all went out there, there's a shed right here along that's in deteriorated condition. Our water sewer supervisor says the shed is, uh, the roof is falling in one area and it's dangerous and, and the, uh, the golf course, the Land Art Village Golf Course uses that for storing all of their implements to maintain the golf course. And then there's also, um, public people who are storing things in there. I've never been in it, I've, I've looked in the windows, but there's some storage and public comes and goes. And, and then there's a water meter as well on the shed and the water meter Miranda called, uh, she had the number and it is in the name of the city and the city's paying the, the, not water meter, excuse me, power meter, and the city's paying the power on, on shed there as well. So, um.
And if your staff recommendation, I was probably Charlie, and we are recommending to tear that shed down. And we think it's a liability to the city, he no longer uses it, we have no use for it and it should be done.
But we, we need to give notice on that because they do keep, they keep some things stored in there. So we need to give them notice certainly on that. Uh, now, I know, I, and it's, you know, we've got family and friends and, and Land Art I do, but I'm elected to represent the citizens of Carabelle and so I have to, I have to, you know, put the citizens of Carabelle first. I've got people sitting in this room right here, right now, that have asked me to, to develop those, find some way to develop a dog park in the city of Carabelle. I know people that live out, myself out on Highway 98 that have nowhere to walk their dog. Uh, dog park is, is a nice thing, but it, it requires fencing and a little entryway where you unleash and leash your dogs and porta-potties or restrooms for humans and, um, sitting benches for humans. I mean, it's, it's more than just a, you know, if you're gonna have, if the city's gonna run a dog park, it's more than just a fenced-in area. So I'll leave that up, y'all can talk about it amongst yourselves. Do we want to, do we want to continue the lease with, and, and have the attorney draw up? I mean, there's no lease, do we want to have a lease and have the attorney draw up something with terms and conditions or do, you know, what do we want to do here?
One question thrown in there real quick that I have. At next month's meeting when we come back and address the issue prior to this one about that property would, if that transpires, then the village and the association would probably have enough property for their dog walk area and whatever.
They would.
And then that would kinda take us out of the issue of having to, them having to provide liability and all the things that's gonna come along with the requirements that the city's gonna have to have. So, uh, that's just a thought.
It is a thought. Uh, and that's, that's why, you know, we, we want to go ahead and make sure that the Land Art Village Association has that property needed to them and, and that all of those documents are complete. But yes, there would be area, there would be space available to, to.
For a dog park.
Yes, to, to let your dogs, uh, free, run free. So.
And then that would, that would, that would kinda take us out of, take the city of Carabelle out of having to try to, right now we kinda feel like we get in the middle sometimes. We wanna help you guys, or I do, and I think the rest of this board does. We wanna support you equally, but it kinda takes us out of the middle of, of feeling like we're in the middle of making decisions and things for you guys. You'd be more independent.
Yeah, well, what it basically is, is a pine tree sitting right there. That, when the prior owner owned that building there, he put the pine tree as a corner. So you go from a pine tree, uh, tree up to, uh, Oak Street, that's all water and sewer. That's where the water and sewer office used to be and now you got the shed.
Right.
Where, where the shed is and everything back is owned by the golf course. Okay? When the bus quit, they turned it over to the golf course.
Well, uh, we don't know, right now, all of the deeds and everything talks about this property that we just discussed with Mr. Tony Johnson belongs to the Land Art Village Association. Now where they have their shed over there where the parking lot is, that does belong to the golf course. That does, but there's this other property that's, uh, adjacent to, immediately adjacent to the water sewer property belongs to the Land Art Village Association. And we want to, we want to make sure.
Water and sewer is Cali, Cali.
Um, and the other side, yes, this belongs to Franklin County. Yes, it does. Uh, so, um.
Again, I guess I'm suggesting that what we do is if Mr. Lawler, I think he would be in agreement, let us resolve this prior issue and let's see where we are from there.
Uh, yes, if we can resolve the prior issue, that would give you a location to have a dog park. Uh, and then the city could be removed from, um, having to provide a dog park for Land Art. Actually, what it is, it's only the people that live in the apartments, that's right. But other people all over the county, also, there's people everywhere all over the county that need and want a place to let their dogs run free. And it makes it, it makes it hard on us, well, if we're providing that for a select few in Land Art Village Apartments, we need to do that here in, in Carabelle as well. But we can't afford that, so let's, let's have a, something maybe for a table.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to table this discussion for the, uh, next agenda item after the last agenda item that we tabled. For the next, uh.
Number two, it says.
Yes, it says.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. Alright, uh, now we've got to do some ordinances here. So we'll do, uh, the, the, uh, second ordinance, number 472, Dan, we won't be doing that one. It's taken. But, uh, first reading of ordinance 471, this is first reading on the floodplain management and there's no action on this one.
This is just an ordinance of the city of Carabelle, Florida, amending ordinance 457, the city of Florida, code ordinances to adopt amendments to the floodplain management ordinance, providing for applicability, repeal or separability and effective date. And the process would be, obviously, no action required. And, um, we'll get, obviously, everything circulated and off to the state. Uh, I was talking to Keisha about this earlier today. We'll get it off to the state to get, uh, kind of final approval of the leased in draft format, the, the ordinance.
Okay, alright, no action. Then the next one we will not read because it's been, it's not been, it's been taken, actually. Okay, so then we have one final resolution, uh, a resolution now, 072019. Uh, resolution expressing support for the city of Carabelle's application to the, do you have that to the Department of State?
I do.
Okay.
Alright, and this is a resolution expressing support for the city of Carabelle's application in the Florida Department of State Division of Historical Resources for a special category grant, setting aside matching funds and providing an effective date, recognizing the Crook River Lighthouse, a local national historic landmark. Whereas the city of Carabelle was founded in 1893 and significant number of sites and structures in Carabelle are over 50 years old and whereas the city of Carabelle believes that these historic sites and structures are a critical and central part of the community and whereas the city of Carabelle has completed and approved a 2020 comprehensive land use plan which includes under 3. G. Point 1, objective 1.6, committed to identify, preserve and protect historic resources and whereas the 1895 Crook River Lighthouse is the most important historic structure in Carabelle that needs preservation and renovation and whereas the Crook River Lighthouse is hereby recognized by the city of Carabelle as a local and national historic landmark and whereas the city of Carabelle desires to submit an application to the Florida Department of State Historic Resources Program for the resource to hire qualified historical preservation architect to plan and execute the acquisition, move, restoration and preservation of the original Keeper's House and restoration of the Crook River Lighthouse Tower and whereas the city of Carabelle is located in Franklin County is considered a rural economic development initiative community which allows reduction in match. Whereas the Crook River Lighthouse Association is agreeing to provide the necessary match funds.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, did you want to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Steve Allen.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, my name is Steve Allen, I am the current president of the Carabelle Lighthouse Association. Uh, we've identified a number of projects, um, that include the, the purchase. One day, Meryl Potts, you and I met at, um, the original Keeper's House. It's down two miles down the road west at, um, at the entry to the Takes Hell Trail. And, um, we have an owner of that building that would like to, was interested in, in selling it back and having it moved back to the property. And we have gotten quotes on the moving of that house back to the lighthouse and the placement on a foundation from Ducky Johnson, which is the recommended mover. We have, um, identified that we would then want to do a, an assessment of what restoration needs to done, needed for that house once moved back to the property. Um, and then there is, so that's sort of one project. Uh, the other project has to do with the tower. Uh, we've been putting a little money aside to paint the tower, to repaint the tower as part of our maintenance plan, um, that sits in account. Um, we have, um, the particular tower that we have, that steel structure has an, um, an issue in the alignment of the plates on the deck of the, um, place where people climb up. And if you climb up there, you will see that the plates are actually separated. And that problem was identified years ago and attempted solution was made where they put a plate underneath it to attach it. But the metal they used for that plate is, um, conflicts with the plate and therefore is now separating, causing more adjustment to happen on that. So we have had an engineer who specializes in the repair of that, of the lighthouse. He has identified that is an issue, it needs to be resolved, that they have new solutions for the splicing or the splinting of those two decks together. And, um, in order to accomplish that, he would have to build or erect a scaffolding around the tower in order to accomplish that and it makes sense at that time to paint the tower. Um, we will be needing to paint it in a number of years anyway and this would keep it from having to be restored when we do the next painting. And they have some good paints now, you know, in just the last two or three years, the paints have improved. Um, we have a quote for that for about $75,000. Um, I put the ordinance in, we were trying to reach the Department of Division of Historic Resources. This weekend we were finally able to have a conversation with them today. Um, it came, became clear to us in the conversation today, several things needed to happen. I think we can withdraw, um, the resolution, although if y'all would like to pass it, I don't think it would really harm. The CLA should be able to apply for the grant. Uh, we have the matching funds. We will probably break that into the first thing being the tower and the restoration of the structural issue first and get that accomplished in the first cycle. It's a very short project. We have the scope of work and, and the money and we have the reserve in our painting fund to cover the actual costs for that grant. And then, um, the, the longer project of purchasing or acquiring the house would require some assessments and, uh, a letter of agreement to sell it to, from an owner. And we'd like to move forward with that in the future, but we won't do that at this time. So, um, since the CLA actuality, because the city, the ordinance in a way is not even required if the city were doing it because in the ordinance it says that the CLA is responsible for the match and the only time that you have to create, according to the Division of Historic Resources, the only time you have to have the ordinance in order to get the grant is if the city is providing the match. So it's not really necessary, I might next month get a.
It wouldn't look good.
It would look good and I, um, that y'all support it. And it does identify that you're not responsible for the match. And the CLA would be making the application on behalf of the city. And at one level, I wanted to come up here and talk to you, um, about those identified plans for the lighthouse because it is your lighthouse, the CLA, um, is the, sort of the managing entity for that. Um, we also have, um, a, a group of people who are looking to write some grants for us to help us fund the landscaping of the park. And as soon as I get a break, I'm going to start the, um, replacement of the, the ship that we've been raising money for in the coming days to get that project started. So, at one level, I just wanna explain those sort of four or five projects that we've identified that we think would make, um, the lighthouse a, um, a real asset. Um, we are also, there's one other project besides those, those that I've mentioned and that is, um, we have asked for and are in negotiations to, uh, to have a long-term loan of the original ends for the, for the lighthouse. It's been in Admiral's Office in New Orleans now for a number of years and we have been requesting and trying to get that back to the lighthouse. And so we're negotiating that lease now. Um, so that's sort of what's going on. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Alright.
But I'm glad that you're taking.
Can you go over that one more time, please?
I'm taking, that you're taking the approach that you are, address the issue that is on lighthouse city property now, that needs to be taken care of in the lighthouse, the tower.
Sure.
And that is our most valuable historic structure belonging to the city of Carabelle and that needs to be taken care of and restored and protected. As far as bringing another building onto the property, I think that you need to come and we'll set aside time, maybe a workshop or just a presentation where you present a full master plan of, of what's gonna happen on that property out there. You say you've identified plans, give us a master plan, where do you want that building to be? Uh, where, uh, you know, who, who's intended to finance the building long-term? Now, I'm sure you're talking about, uh, looking for a grant to, to move the building and maybe rehab it, but who's gonna pay the utili? That's another building that could come under the, um, cost of, you know, the maintenance cost and the utilities cost for the city and we need to know this and understand it before we, you know, accept it. Now I want you to know that I am for preserving, but I, but I wanna make sure that that building is, is documented, that that is the original Keeper's House. I, you know, personally, I don't know and, you know.
Well, that is documented.
Okay, so that's very good. And, you know, what is the condition, what's it gonna take? Can, can you really truly get grant money that's gonna repair all of it? And, and then let us know how you intend to support that long-term or were you looking to the city for support of that?
Right.
To operate that building? And will it be open to the public, all these things? And, and your other items that you have. So I, I would recommend, I, I wasn't gonna recommend this resolution anyway because I was so concerned, because there were so many unanswered questions about the building being moved.
Sure.
Um, in all great favor of the renovation of the lighthouse.
Sure.
And restoration, so.
Um, I, I would like to offer something if you could, um, the lighthouse and the lighthouse park. The lighthouse and the lighthouse park, and we've done a lot of work over the last several years. If you've been out there lately, it looks so much better where we maintain it in the trees. I know there was some question when the trees were thin, that we would get it under control, but we have been very diligent to do so. And the park looks better than it ever has. And it operates better than it has in terms of people stopping by. But it is an asset of the city, the, the park and the CLA manager. I would like to be asked to be included, even if it's just a written report every month that documents the number of visitors and things that happen at the lighthouse as part of the reports for the other things in your report. And then I would come or somebody would come if there was a particular thing. Does that make sense? You want to come?
Well, I don't know where you're wanting that to be.
On, on the city meeting here, we have Water Friends Partnership Economic Development and the lighthouse.
Oh, you want the lighthouse association.
To have, to have, and I could submit mainly just a report unless there was some reason for me to come and say, you know, this month we're doing something special or whatever. And it would just be part of the reports that y'all could keep up with the activities out there in terms of the maintenance and water management.
You can go ahead and submit a report to all of us. I mean, but as far as putting you on as a, as an advisory board of, you know, or staff or something like that to come up here and make a report every month, I don't think that's necessary.
I'm not interested in standing up and talking.
Okay.
Y'all hear enough of it.
Okay, it's nine o'clock.
Right. I tried to make this short, but I would like to at least start working on a regular report that I make you because we do have some plans. I, I think you're correct in terms of making sure that they, their repair and their replacement of the house was a feasible piece. And, and we're looking to make that, that venue out there a more important piece.
Okay. So, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Would the city entertain giving us a letter of support for that grant if the CLA is ready to afford it since?
For the, for the rehab of the lighthouse?
Yes.
I would suggest, yes, that we, we should do that, the letter of support for rehab of the lighthouse.
Could you all?
Of the tower, of the lighthouse tower, the structural issue and repainting of the tower.
Just send it to Ms. Courtney, Dan.
We just think that we need something in the city.
Well, let's just have a motion for a letter of support for the.
We will let the other support.
Okay, from the head. All right, so I'll go for Commissioner Allen. I got Allen.
Yeah, go for Allen.
Okay, any discussions? All in favor? Yes, any, okay, that motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right.
No second.
Okay. All right, that's Commissioner Mathis and Commissioner Allen. All in favor? All right, then that carries.